Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm supposed to do this part. Um, we're gonna have invocation by Pastor Derek McGee from Bible-Based Church Tallahassee. Commissioner Proctor, uh, I don't see him. He's gonna do our Pledge of Allegiance. Um, you got it? Yeah. Commissioner Maddox, introduce our... Do you want to introduce our... Thank you.
Today, we have with us Pastor Derek McGee. He'll be giving our invocation. Pastor McGee?
Yes, sir.
Lord George.
Let us pray. O Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. We come today to handle important business, necessary business. So we pray for today's meeting. We invoke your presence and your power. I pray for this county commission, pray that you would be with them, that you would endow them with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and peace. We pray for the citizenry of our county, oh God, that everything that is discussed today and decided upon will be for the benefit and the blessing of this community. Thank you for this service. Thank you for the people who've made it here safely. Let all that be done, be done for your glory and your glory alone. We thank you once again. It's in your name that we do pray. Amen, amen, and amen.
Thank you, Pastor McGee. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, and thank you Pastor McGee for being here. We appreciate you blessing us today. Um, alright, so, uh, I think now we're gonna move into awards and presentations. Um, Mr. County Commissioner, do you want to recognize those, or you want me to do it? I forget if it's you or me. Okay, so Commissioner Maddox, are you ready to do the proclamation for Mr. Hollinger?
Yes, sir.
Okay, floor is yours.
Miss Hollinger? Come on, Pastor. Let you bow to big dogs out today. I'll let you introduce when it's your turn. Everybody come on up. Alright. Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, whereas Delatory J. Hollinger has been a historic preservationist, a community activist in his native Tallahassee, Florida since he was 13 years of age, ultimately leading him to serve at the age of 24 in the role of the president of the Tallahassee branch of the NAACP, the youngest president in the branch's history. It does deserve me, absolutely. Whereas at age 17 years old, Delatory Hollinger was named curator of the Taylor House Museum of Historic French Town by the Tallahassee Urban League Incorporated. Due to Hollinger's subsequent research and persistence, he succeeded in having the century-old house listed on the National Registry of Historic Places by the United States Department of the Interior on April the 6th, 2015. And whereas in 2013, Delatory Hollinger founded the nonprofit National Association of the Preservation of African-American History and Culture Incorporated, which is committed to serving endangered African-American historic landmarks, educating American communities about the contribution of African-American pioneers, and exists to support and protect the artifacts that remain to tell the story, trials, triumphs, and preserve perseverance of African-Americans. And whereas Delatory Hollinger's many initiatives as founder and president of NAPAHC, and that is all of it, includes the designation of a major state thoroughfare in honor of late civil rights luminary Reverend C.K. Steele. involvement, C.K. Steele's involvement in the renaming, I'm sorry, honor of the late civil rights luminary Reverend C.K. Steele, involvement in the renaming of the Lake Henrietta Park to Anita L. Davis Preserve at Lake Henrietta Park, and most significantly, the efforts to save the old Leon County Jail building in Tallahassee's historic Cascade Park. And whereas the most prominent and successful preservation initiative led by Hollinger in the NAPAHC was to uncover lost graves of formerly enslaved persons on the grounds of the Capital City Country Club in Tallahassee, Florida. The story was covered by many national news outlets, including US Today, NBC News, New York Daily News, The Root, and Newsweek. And whereas, as a civic leader, Delatory Hollinger has participated in numerous voter registration efforts and has planned and organized many rallies and protests to promote various civil rights causes. And whereas, Delatory Hollinger is a champion for historic preservation and is making significant contributions to raise awareness of the pressing need to save, protect, and interpret America's black past through advocacy, activism, names of facilities and streets for prominent African-Americans, and the founding of the affiliate organizations and museums. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County, Florida hereby recognizes Delatory J. Hollinger for his many contributions as a historic preservationist and community activist in Leon County. This is signed by the chair, as well as the rest of the commission, attested to by the county administrator. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, and the entire commission. I'd like to recognize my pastor, the Reverend Dr. Chris A. Bernie. I'd like to recognize my mom, Delores Hollinger, my aunt, Blondell Hollinger, the greatest partner and co-executive director on planet Earth, Ms. Jackie Perkins, my big brother, Brent Hartsfield of 20 years, my friend, Lenika Bennett, who's here, and two, 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 I missed, where, miss? Where Patrice? Patrice! Patrice! Patrice Fields, my greatest St. Mark's Premoniter Baptist church family, Tashi Martin, and Darren Colbert, who is our IT person for the Florida Civil Rights Museum. I just want to thank the commission for this recognition. I thank God, and I pray that he will continue to give me the strength to continue to serve. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick comment?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
While you're taking pictures, I just want to acknowledge Delatory's work and thank you for doing this work at a time when knowing our history is more important than ever. Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to detail what has been said about Mr. Hollinger and just congratulate him on all his hard work, along with Ms. Perkins, and what they do to preserve important history, African-American history is all of our history. So I appreciate them. Very well-deserved proclamation and thank Commissioner Maddox for presenting and thanking enough of him to provide that proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. All right. All right, Commissioner Cummings, I think you are up for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners and members of the audience, we are certainly honored and pleased to have with us today members of the Marching 100, accompanied by their band director, Mr. Shelby Shipman. And they are going to entertain us for a minute. So at this point, before I present the proclamation, I'm gonna ask Dr. Shelby Shipman if he will come to the podium, to the microphone, absolutely. And he might want to just do a little introduction before the band comes in. Thank you, Doctor.
Good afternoon, everybody. How's it going?
Good afternoon.
Oh, y'all could do better than that. How's it going up in here?
Good afternoon.
I know you're gonna feel better after the Marching 100 comes in here, but let me first of all say good afternoon to each and every one of you on behalf of our university interim president, Dr. Timothy Beard, and of course, all the administration and our dean, Dr. Valencia Matthews, and our chairman of the music department, Mr. Lindsey B. Sargent. I present to you, I'm not Joe Bullet, but ladies and gentlemen, the Florida A&amp;M University Marching Band.
Woo! All right.
Okay, and so the next selection that we'd like to perform is entitled, you've heard it a lot of times at the football games, one of the staple pieces, go way, way, way back, SOS, in the house.
Say "in"!
If you don't know this, when something is not right, here we go.
Say "in"!
And so as we pause for a second, again, I'd like to say And so as we pause for a second, again, I'd like to say good afternoon to each and every one of you. My name is Dr. Shelby Shipman, and I serve as director of bands here at Florida A&amp;M University in Tallahassee. And I tell you, I don't know if I can have a better job in these United States of America than be the leader of this fantastic, incomparable Marching 100. And I bring you greetings on behalf of all of our 285 students that marched in the band this year. Assembled before you, of course, are about 30 students who saw it not robbery, and they had free time to come down here today, and were very blessed, and of course, very pleased and honored and thankful to Commissioner Cummings and all of you for this opportunity we have. And of course, I'd like to ask for any of the administration that may be here in the house, as well as I know our chair, Mr. Lindsey B. Sargent standing to my right, and he's been the chief arranger at Florida A&amp;M University now for a few years. And of course, he's our dynamic Department of Music chair. If there are any other administrators that are here, I don't want to overlook anyone. If you would please join us at this time. And so I thought it would be fitting to bring the actual trophy. And so that you know, there were six bands invited to the Band of the Year. There were two high schools and four colleges, and of course, there were two divisions. There was, oh, hey, Sister Cummings is here. And of course, we had two in the Division II category, and of course, Florida A&amp;M University and another HBCU was in the Division I category. And so there were 12 panelists on a judging panel, that is, evaluating the different areas of music, marching, precision, dynamic contrast, the creativity. And of course, Florida A&amp;M University, from the polls that were given throughout the fall semester, rose to one of those two groups. And of course, we were presented this, thank you, presented this particular trophy for winning the Band of the Year. And of course, came with that, not only the state, but the honorarium that they provided for scholarships for our current students as we move forward in band operations. So if you could, please give it up for our students and staff. The band ESPN Band of the Year.
Dr. Shipman, we still gotta give you a proclamation, man.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. And you know, I don't think these chambers will ever be the same, Mr. County Administrator. Oh, Lord, I think this is the first of its kind to have this renowned band entertain us here today, and we're certainly grateful for that. But now for the moment, we are here to present a proclamation to this great band and this great leadership. And what I will do is present it, if you'll just hold it, Dr. Shipman, while I read it. And I'm gonna try to be cute and read it without my glasses, but I might have to put them on. Okay, and it goes like this. Whereas the Florida A&amp;M University here in Alfa FAMU Marching 100 has been nationally acclaimed as one of the most dynamic and innovative collegiate marching bands that has set the standards for musical excellence, precision, and showmanship. And whereas the FAMU Marching 100 began to flourish in 1946 under the visionary leadership of Dr. William P. Foster, and over the years has continued to bring pride and prestige to the university, to Leon County, to the city of Tallahassee, and to the state of Florida A&amp;M. Whereas, under the leadership of great band directors over the years, who include Dr. Julian E. White, Dr. Sylvester Young, and presently, Dr. Shelby Shipman, the FAMU Marching 100 introduced over 30 groundbreaking marching techniques that have become standard across collegiate and high school band programs and have continued to influence marching bands throughout the nation. And whereas in 1965, the FAMU Marching 100 became the first historically black college and university band to receive the subliminal trophy from the John Phillips Sousa Foundation, which is the highest honor awarded to college marching bands. And whereas, the FAMU Marching 100 continues to captivate audiences on national and international platforms, and their historic appearances include performances at several Super Bowls, Grammy Awards, and the Rose Bowl selection in 1989 as the official U.S. representative in the bicentennial celebration of the French Revolution in Paris, France, performances at the Louis Vuitton Fashion Show for Men during Paris Fashion Week in June 2022, participation in the inaugural parade for both Presidents Obama and Clinton, and so many more. These appearances highlight the global impact and cultural significance of the Marching 100, and their performances have continued to inspire generations of students, supporters, and spectators. And whereas ESPN selected the FAMU Marching 100 as the 2024 Historically Black College and University Band of the Year and recognized the outstanding musical skill and meticulous choreography the band displays. This award reflects the dedication, discipline, and artistry of the directors, student musicians, and support staff, and cements the band's status as a cultural and musical powerhouse. And whereas, the Florida A&amp;M University Marching 100 exemplifies excellence in musicianship, excellence in academic achievement, and excellence in community engagement, thereby reinforcing the legacy of greatness that Florida A&amp;M University represents. And now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commission of Leon County, Florida, that the Florida A&amp;M University Marching 100, under the leadership of Dr. Shelby Shipman, is hereby recognized and congratulated for being named the 2024 Historically Black College and University Band of the Year by ESPN. And we extend our sincerest gratitude for the outstanding contributions to music, education, and culture that the Marching 100 exemplifies. Dated this 11th day of February 2025, and is signed by our commission chair, Mr. Brian Welch, all the other commissioners, and attested to by county administrator, Mr. Vincent Long. Thank you. We love you guys. We are proud of you. Congratulations. Okay, and I understand that, Mr. Shipman, I understand that the president of the university might very well be here today. If he is, if he would join us at the podium, is he here, Dr. Beard? Okay, I heard that, he's not here. Okay. He's on a meeting. Okay, okay. I heard that he was here. Uh, but anyway, we would like to take a...
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we're gonna... I don't know if we're gonna let...
We'll take pictures and then we'll, I know commissioners want to say something, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we're gonna let Commissioner Proctor be in that picture with that tie on. Commissioner Proctor, we gonna need that tie off for you, brother.
You gotta hide that Howard vice in time.
You want us to come out?
Yeah, he think he slick.
That tie color's innocent.
It's not blue and white. It's not blue and white. I went all off, brother.
All right, commissioners, would you all like to say anything? Commissioner Proctor, you want to say something?
Yes, sir.
I know you do.
Chairman, you know me. I am told the trumpet guys down there that I was actually a trumpet player back in the sixth grade or something like that. And we're so excited, band. We're so excited. And this is probably the only band in America where people who purchase tickets for a football game as many people buy a ticket to see the halftime show is actually to see the athletic contest before quarters. I don't know if there's firm research on that, but certainly, in terms of economic development and the attraction and appeal around the United States when this band travels, people want to see the 100. Dr. Shipman, you know how proud I am of you, Professor Sargent, over the years. Dr. Chipman, you know how proud I am of you, Professor Sargent, over the years. And we were on the elevator, some of the members, to state that in the South Side, in District One, generation after generation, has heard the Hundred practice until the wee hours of the morning. They're just a public nuisance. And then they get up early. I mean, like, Prentice Baptist was moderator Bernie. I mean, early, you know, that kind of early Carmen in the morning, and out there disturbing the peace of all. But one thing the community's always done is yielded, no complaints, it's a welcome. And we know when it's football season, because round about for early August or late July, we're going to hear that sound. It's a sound you won't ever hear. Joe Bullitt would say they're often imitated, but never duplicated, and it's so true. Now, finally, I'm going to show it to you, I'm going to get on my phone. So Bishop A.J. Richardson comments about, you know, Kendrick Lamar. And I get a picture during the Super Bowl after halftime of Bishop Richardson as head drum major at Super Bowl III. And I told him that this was very interesting, but this ain't today. And from Super Bowl III, Vince, you'd appreciate the Jets versus Baltimore Colts, Joe Willie Namath predicted he was going to win. He did, and the Hundred was there. I didn't hear the Rose Bowl mentioned in that recital, but it was in there.
It was in there.
All right, everybody heard it. Yeah, 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 that was a lot of money raised for that one, you know. And we're going to continue to support and love you all. Thank you all. Love you all, Hundred. God be the glory.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Proctor, I didn't know you were a trumpet player.
Absolutely.
You know, in high school, I was a trumpet player too, but I really kind of joined because it kind of fit my high school schedule at the time. But, but, so I was, I was not the best trumpet player. But what I, what I found was that bands really work hard. Nonstop practice, as you all said, marching in hot humidity for hours on end, just the nonstop dedication and work I saw in my high school band, which won awards, but in spite of me being on the, in the band. So I, you know, I've seen it, I've been along with people that have really put in the hard work, the long hours to do what you do. And then to have you all put the work in and to get the recognition that you deserve at the national level, really says a lot about each and every one of you, every single one of you, as well as the university, as well as this community. Because there are good things, great things happening in Leon County and Tallahassee. You all are a great example of it. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for representing this community to the rest of the country. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Minor. Commissioner O'Keefe, I haven't seen you move like that ever.
You haven't been paying attention.
That's true. That's true.
I just want to thank you. It's an honor to have you here for me, truly. Y'all are welcome anytime. Everybody would rather hear from you than from us. And if there's anything I can do, y'all are so amazing and so skilled. If we can get you some NIL money for these band members, let me know how I can help.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox?
I think Commissioner Minor took the words out of my mouth. The hard work that it takes to perform at this level and to do what you're doing needs to be applauded. Championship happened for you guys. A band year happened far before you actually presented the trophy. It probably happened somewhere around the summer. I know people who have been a part of the Marching 100, and I can, I can say as a former athlete and football player, they probably work harder than we do out there on the field. So don't think that your hard work goes unnoticed, and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner, Commander, anything or no?
My heart, my heart rate is still about 140 beats per minute from that bass drum. But I just want to say you guys sounded incredible, and hats off to the hard work that you guys do day in and day out. And hopefully, I can catch a football game this season and watch you guys perform at halftime. So cheers, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Dr. Chipman, I'll, I'll close out the commentary by saying thank you. Thank you to all your band members for being here. That was pretty unprecedented, Commissioner Cummings. I think that was awesome. I would, I would let you guys know that we meet again on March 18th, and every second Tuesday of the month thereafter. So we would fully expect you all to slide back in and hit us with a couple jams before we start our next few meetings, all right? Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have with us the Provost from the university, Dr. Watson, and she might want to come and say-
Dr. Watson, by all means. Thank you for being here.
Well, good afternoon. It is a pleasure to be before you. I'm wearing red because it's Valentine's, it's Black History Month, and I also have such love for the Marching 100, Dr. Chipman and his team. You all have made an indelible impression on the city, and so we feel that it is our honor to do that same for you. So having us here, recognizing the work and contributions that our leaders do, but more importantly, that our students do every single day when they show up and they earn excellent grades, and will go on to hopefully live in this state and be employed in this state, we are so proud. We appreciate the continuous support of our Commissioners. They are there every step of the way, leading us. Commissioner Proctor, of course, has invited me to his classroom, and I look forward to joining him. But on behalf of our esteemed interim President, Dr. Timothy Beard, our entire senior leadership team, we are very proud and thankful and humbled to be a part of this day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I got one last thing to say. You got something?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add, unlike Commissioner Proctor, I was actually a member of an HBCU marching band and symphonic band. So I know all of the hard work musicians that goes into preparation, getting up early, getting out of class, going straight to the practice field, and then taking those long trips to support the sports, to support the basketball team and the football team, taking your, your books and your computers on the, on the buses to study. So I know that you all are very highly motivated, very highly intelligent, and we just congratulate you student musicians for all that you do. You make good grades, but you still contribute to the band tremendously. So we thank you. Congratulations to all of you. And I think Dr. Shipman, Shipman has something else he wants to say.
I would first like to ask one of the students' leaders to come up front and provide some inspirational marks, remarks on behalf of our students, and he'll introduce himself, one of our assistant head drum majors.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Haseem Smith. I'm a senior music industry student from Atlanta, Georgia, and I serve as the assistant head drum major of the Marching 100. We want to say thank you for having us today and for celebrating us. This achievement did take a lot of work. It took sacrifice on the part of our students in the band, our staff, who is the best staff in the country, and many, many more. And it's a blessing to be honored and celebrated as the ESPN 2024 Band of the Year, but it's an even greater honor to be celebrated by those who contributed to your success. And so for that, on behalf of the students, the staff, the Incomparable Marching 100 and FAMU, we'd all like to say thank you.
We'll increase your scholarship, those fine remarks. No, so that was a joke. All righty. So before we play our last selection, I would again like to express appreciation on behalf of everybody. If you want to see the Incomparable Marching 100, we are going to present at the, not this Thursday's basketball game, but on Saturday, Arena Floor Show. So if you want to come to the game and check us out, you can, and probably have all 280 students there for that performance. And then on the 22nd of this month, the following Saturday, we will present a floor show, but it's going to be very much so a celebratory kind of presentation in that we're ordering, of course, Band of the Year shirts for all of the students, and we're also going to indulge for the community's support, as we're going to order a historic classic ring for every single student that participated. And so we'll need the support of the community in acknowledging our students with the Band of the Year rings. But more importantly, you'll get a chance to see the Hundred live if you haven't seen us at a basketball game. So we're very excited about this Saturday and certainly next Saturday, the 22nd, at the Al Lawson Arena on campus. So we look forward to seeing each and every one of you. And again, thank you. I'm going to ask for all students, if this is your first year, your first-year student, raise your hand. Second-year students, third-year students, fourth-year students. So again, we have 280 students, but what we always try and do with a lot of the many, we call them virtuoso performances, is break them up, so we're not asking the same students all of the time to participate in some of these type of events and activities. And certainly, we thank you for this opportunity to be here today, and we, of course, wish Godspeed on each and every one of you, and look forward to seeing you in the future. And of course, there's another amazing event that's going to take place later on in April, and it's not announced, announced yet, but don't tell anybody yet. Okay, but the FAMU Win Symphony will be performing in Washington, D.C. at the Kennedy Center on April 15th, and it hasn't been announced officially yet, but we will be giving this county and the city, and of course, our university is very aware of what's going on with the whole logistical piece with that. But again, that's an honor for us to be able to perform in that venue. 2015, we performed at Carnegie Hall in New York City. And so we're always trying to provide the students a very balanced kind of opportunities. Our choir has performed in Austria a couple of years ago, and of course, our jazz band has also performed on the national level. And so we're just very proud of all the students in the Department of Music as they serve all aspects of our campus in terms of colleges and schools. So finally, we present to you, you know, the old sitcom, Good Times, and we're going to try and find a way for the tubas and percussion to bring it on home. So if you haven't seen this, you're going to see it for the first time. So drum majors, Good Times, and we'll see you guys when we see you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you again.
Wow. I've never gotten so much cardio sitting still. Um, oh my goodness. All right. Well, I almost feel bad for the Florida State University SGA. But if I have anybody here from FSU SGA, please join me at the podium, please.
Yeah, what do you got, Andy? Come on up.
Wow, that is an incredibly tough act to follow. Good afternoon. My name is Jackson Bover, and I have the honor of serving as Florida State University's Student Body President. I'd like to begin today by taking a moment to thank our faculty and staff that are here with us today, including Dr. Yui Chu and Dr. Williams, as well as our incredible advising team with the student government offices, Mr. Andy Johnson and Ms. Kiana Austin. We wouldn't be able to do half of the work that we get done without you all, so thank you all for your support. We created our version of a budget game just about a year ago, and since then, we've used it as a tool to train our students how to be effective stewards of public funds. And we have also had the unique opportunity of being able to share it with different universities at several state and national conferences this past year, including at the University of Florida's Student Government Institute back in May, the Regional Conference for the National Association for Student Affairs Administration, and most recently, at the ACC Leadership Symposium hosted here at FSU, which was attended by over 90 student leaders from across the different ACC universities. I'd like to thank you all for this incredible recognition and this honor, and as always, go Knowles. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you all. Y'all see these young FSU SGA guys? They just grab that microphone, they don't hesitate at all. All right? Well, I'm going to read you guys a proclamation. Congratulations on all your successes. I assume most of y'all are, it's SGA, y'all political science majors or anything like that? Yeah. Yeah, I got, I got a master's degree and a master's degree in political science at FSU, so look how high you can go, right? You can follow the, you can follow the Marching 100. So whereas the Florida State University Student Government Association is committed to innovation and excellence in training its student leaders to serve as effective stewards of the FSU student body and the campus community, and whereas FSU SGA recently adapted Leon County's Let's Balance Budget Simulation Game, a board game originally developed by Leon County Government to engage and educate citizens regarding the complexities of balancing a county budget into a training tool tailored to the needs of student government leaders, and whereas through the development of its own version of Let's Balance, FSU SGA has equipped student leaders with valuable skills and insights into the realities, challenges, and responsibilities associated with managing a student government budget, thereby enhancing students' ability to make informed financial decisions and better serve the FSU student body. And whereas FSU SGA's innovative adaptation of Let's Balance has garnered significant recognition in the field of higher education and student affairs, resulting in SGA's recent invitation to present this training tool at state, regional, and national conferences, elevating FSU students as national leaders in the field of student government administration. And whereas FSU SGA's efforts in adapting and presenting Let's Balance have set a high standard for student leadership training and will enable FSU students now and in the future to serve as thought leaders and sharing best practices with student governments and university staff across the United States, contributing to a culture of collaboration, fiscal stewardship, and civic engagement on campuses nationwide. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida hereby recognizes and commends the Florida State University Government, Student Government Association for its contributions to both the university and the broader community through its dedication, leadership, and innovation in student training, and its commitment to advancing fiscal stewardship and responsible budget management among future leaders. Dated this 11th day of February 2025, signed by the Chairman, myself, and all the, all the Commissioners, and congratulations, you guys. Good job. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for- Thank you for coming out and thank you for adopting, you know, like, I know that Leon County sets the standard high here for balancing budgets and, uh, being fiscally responsible. So, you know, if you guys can mirror that at FSU SGA, you know, you'll be on the track to great success. All right? So thank you all. Uh, Andy, did you wanna say anything? Come on, man.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, esteemed staff as well. Uh, good to see y'all again. Andy Johnson, Program Director for Student Governance and Advocacy at FSU. Uh, as y'all probably remember, uh, a time ago, I was a Leon County employee for nine, almost 10 years, under the guidance and direction of, uh, Commissioner Proctor, the greatest county administrator in the galaxy. These days, uh, I'm honored to have the privilege of advising what I consider to be the greatest student government in the galaxy. Uh, and as you heard today, they're doing amazing work. Um, you'd be surprised to know they are responsible for allocating a budget totaling, wait for it, $14 million a year of student activity fee revenues, uh, and they're doing amazing things with that. Um, they, they support our campus recreation activities, they support the student union, uh, they send students to conferences, they send, uh, you know, they, they support student events and activities across campus. As a matter of fact, they're also getting, uh, into the world of emergency management. Y'all may remember, we had a little bit of a tornado last spring. Uh, it impacted the, the FSU campus significantly, uh, but these students just jumped right out of their seat, wanted to help, um, a- and we found an opportunity for them to, uh, actually use some, some of their funding to restock the, the food pantry that we have on campus, um, while they were, uh, in a little bit of a tough bind. They had lost all their perishable food because of power outages. So they're doing amazing things, y'all. Um, I know you can be proud of them now, and I, and you'll be, you'll continue to be proud of the student government, uh, for a long, long time to come. And, uh, and it's an honor to work with all these amazing students every day. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you all so very much.
Mr. Vice Chairman, with $14 million, every junior must be running for student president.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may.
Got it? All right. Thank you, guys. I was gonna say 14 million, it's only a little bit less than our general revenue budget.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Yeah, I just wanna say, um, I have experienced my, with their tightness on that budget. Uh, the FSU SGA was my first experience submitting a budget and getting it soundly rejected. Um, so I'll keep, keep the strings tight.
Mr. County Administrator.
Just a real quick plug, I couldn't miss the opportunity. Uh, Commissioners, a- as you know, we're so happy that, that FSU took this Let's Balance game and, and ran with it. And as they said, it's being replicated now with, through, with universities throughout the country, which is, is really great. And, but as you all know, again, we created this Let's Balance Budget Game as a way to promote transparency and citizen engagement in our process. Uh, and since that time, it's been adopted by, and as the, the county attorney just reminded me, it's trademarked, still never saw, still, I've still never seen a dollar from it yet. But, uh, but we've, we've had hundreds of, of cities and counties throughout the USA adopt this, in addition to, um, uh, organizations like Florida Tax Watch adopted the game and it's created their own, uh, for the Florida, uh, for the state of Florida budget and that sort of thing. So we're just so happy, uh, to see, uh, when, when this sort of thing happens and, and just to, to see Andy, uh, go back to school and, and relive his, his youth is just so nice, uh, to see it. But anyway, uh, but with that, I just wanted to thank FSU, they're doing a great job. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Andy, like Rodney Dangerfield, man. That's an, y'all ain't gonna get that joke. That's a back-to-school joke. Um, yes, ma'am, Commissioner Cummings.
I just want to just congratulate the students and our former county employee, I wanna congratulate, uh, county administrator as well. I know he, uh, his arm reaches, has a, has a wide reach, but students, we, we are very proud of you all, and we know that each one of you will have a very, very bright future. Just continue your hard work, continue to study. Sky is the limit. So thank you for all you all contribute. To the university, you make Florida State University very proud of you, and you make Leon County look real good as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
All right. Uh, Mr. County Administrator, do we have any sit-on consent and non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we do have.
Uh, name and address for the record, Mr. Monteleone.
Uh, yes. My name is Simon Alexander Monteleone. Uh, I am originally from Cape Coral, Florida, but my current address is Bryan Hall, so that's 147 Convocation Way, apartment number 147.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just give me one second. Hello, honored ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, my name is Simon Monteleone. I am a student at Florida State University. Go Knowles, and thank you to our SGA that's leaving. Uh, I'm also a member of Leon County. I am here to ask you, as a single declaration, that we declare a state of emergency in the state, uh, in the county of Leon County due to the alarming rate of Leon County citizens without health insurance. During Leon County's last, last health report, socioeconomic status was listed as a public health risk. Since then, the socioeconomic divide in Leon County has significantly worsened. As it stands today, 10.7% of Leon County citizens do not have health insurance, significantly hindering, uh, their ability to access quality healthcare on a timely basis. With inflation predicted to rise consistently in the coming year, this number is also continued, expected to continue to grow. As someone who has dealt with seeing a close friend go through the hardships of being uninsured, it is heartbreaking to see such a high rate of community in the same state. Especially with the national average being only 8%, it breaks my heart knowing that they are unable to go to the doctor's office with the risk, without the risk of bankruptcy, and that compared to the national average, our county average is considerably higher. We, the people of Leon County, as well as myself and as the membership chair of Sunrise, Tallahassee, ask you to declare a state of emergency to pressure the state to reprioritize public health in Lee County and throughout the state in the upcoming budget. Thank you, honorable members of this chair. I yield my time.
Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
Vanden R. Jones Jr., to be followed by Alan Ballas.
I'd prefer to say good afternoon to everyone. My name is Major Vanden R. Jones Jr., United States Army. I am a resident of the Jagatha Neighborhood, but also the vice president. My address is 3307 Wheatley Road, Tallahassee, Florida 32305. Mr. Chair, with water control coming through our neighborhood, as you noted, last year, we had a lot of flooding that was going on. The reason why I'm here to talk to you as well is because a part of our community also sits and lies in the county. When you're on Ridge Road, you're actually on the west side, that part of the, uh, county starts where the ditch is that goes into Lake Henrietta. Problem that we're having is that we have 25% of the water that comes from downtown Tallahassee, and it goes through the community of Jagatha. It goes from the city down through Jagatha Golf Course, it connects into what we call Silver Lake East. Silver Lake East connects into what you call Lake Henrietta. Lake Henrietta connects into Muntz and Slough, Muntz and Lake, which connects into our aquifer at the Walcolor, uh, Springs area. The problem that we're having is, is that when we had the national news, uh, to show the flooding that happened in our neighborhood, it happened on both the county and the city side. You had eight cars that were underwater. That was right off of Ridge Road. We had two cars that were on the city side, which was in the, uh, Trail Park that was on the east side of the golf course. The golf course stayed shut down for over two and a half weeks because we couldn't get the water out. The idea of having that ditch, which was built in 1933, was to be able to connect that ditch to all of the water systems that we all share here in the county, but also we share that with Walcolor County as well. That is our drinking water, the water that you use to take baths. We also are concerned because there was a ditch that was reinforced with what we call Steel Skirts Gabions that was on the bridge by Bragg. Greenville, excuse me, Greenwood, as well as Bragg Drive is where the ditch fails. It does not have skirts gabions. It connects that ditch into what we call Silver Lake East. Skirts behind Silver Ridge. Those houses had to be reinforced. Houses that were on what we call, uh, the ditches on the side of the county are too shallow, not wide enough. Same thing, uh, same thing that's happening on the city side and the county side. So we're asking that everybody gets together so we're able to move that water from downtown. You have 25% of that water.
Mr. Jones, could you wrap up? Your time's up.
Okay, sorry. Again, appreciate your time, um, for listening to me.
Yes, sir.
And wish you can help us out.
Yeah, please feel free to email all of our offices the time and dates and stuff that you are asking focused to attend. Thank you. Yes, sir. And Commissioners, let me take a point of personal privilege. I, I skipped a couple of proclamations on the, uh, agenda. Those have been postponed till later. Uh, our sheriff is out of town, and I did want to, uh, ask us to include him in our prayers, um, as his, his granddaughter, you know, experienced, uh, a medical emergency out west. So please pray for our, our good sheriff, and, uh, we'll go back to the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alan Ballas to be followed by Kenneth White.
Yes, uh, me and, and Kenneth White are asking to, uh, speak at the end so we can be addressed with questions. I've been working with Commissioner Proctor on what I'm here to speak on, and I do have to drive back to Panama City after this, so I would appreciate your, your, ever. Thank you very much.
Uh, are you, Mr. Ballas, are you speaking on the previous issue and, uh, the water issue?
No, sir. I won't talk.
Separate issue? Okay.
Totally separate.
And you wanna wait till, but you gotta get to Panama City, but you wanna wait? This thing could go to late.
I've driven all the way over here, and I wanna be able to be questioned by, by.
We don't question, uh, like, we don't do question and answer in this Citizens to Be Heard section, so, um, you can say what you need to say, and then you can speak to Commissioners individually off the dais. Uh, yeah, I don't even know what, Commissioner Proctor seems to know what it is, so, yeah, you're good with him. All right. Yeah, I mean, whenever we finish, whenever we get to the next time, but it could be a while. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, final speaker on this section, Frank Williams.
Good afternoon to the chair, the board of county commissioners. Thank you very much for having us. We're honored to be here. Did not expect to get entertainment this afternoon, but it was certainly a delightful time to hear the Hundred work today. I'm here to speak on behalf of, uh, the Henry Hill Foundation, which I am chair of, and, uh, my address is, uh, 1704 Hill Gate Court, Tallahassee, Florida, uh, zip code 32304. Standing next to me, who will speak on behalf of our foundation, is my first cousin, Henry Hill. He is our family historian, and he's going to share some information with you about our Emancipation Day, which we have been celebrating at Henry Hill Park, located 1835 Centerville Road, for over 100 years. Uh, we ourselves, our family, uh, have been financially, uh, carrying this burden of, uh, keeping this event going for many, many years, and we appreciate the support from the county that you all have given us well, and we come asking that you will perhaps help us again this year. And Hunter's gonna give you a brief history on our Emancipation Day, and he's gonna do his best as they can.
Good afternoon. It's good to be here this afternoon. I, the first time I've been here in my lifetime, and so I don't know all this was going on. But on the behalf of our Emancipation Day proclamation, celebration, we are asking to help us out if you can. Now, we have been doing this since 1887, and we never came before the Commissioners to ask for anything. But we are asking you at this time if you could give us some help in our efforts. What we normally do, we, uh, have a program, and we feed, it's, we're fed as many as 300 people, and we never ask for anything along those lines. However, as time has gotten hard, and we are coming for you this afternoon to ask you to help us out if, in, in any way you can. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. This is an issue that you may wanna discuss in commission time. The Henry Hill Foundation, you guys have a, a big fish fry cookout thing, right, every year? Is it right on Centerville Road?
Yes.
Correct. So it's kinda over near the hospital in that area, um, and, and you, did, I don't know if we've given any funding in the past? We have?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Proctor, you may know more on it, but it may be something to discuss in commissioner time. So, um, if you guys wanna talk to Commissioner Proctor on the side and maybe get him to, let him know what you're asking for specifically, and then he can bring it up in commission time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. All right, Mr. County Administrator, any other speakers?
That concludes our speakers, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioners, we are on our consent agenda. We've had one item pulled, so I would like to entertain a motion for the other items. Second. Okay, I got a motion from Commissioner Maddox and a second from Commissioner Minor for the consent agenda minus item number nine, which has been pulled. Uh, is there any discussion? Saying no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously. We are now on item number nine, Commissioner, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number nine, Commissioners, provides a status report, um, at the request of the board. It covers ongoing investments, initiatives, and strategic programming along both the North Monroe Street as well as Pensacola Street corridors. Uh, again, you've got a lot of information provided here, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. I would note that, uh, I believe that Artie White is on deck and, again, ready to, uh, answer any questions the board may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no speakers on this side.
Um, thank you, Mr. Administrator. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, to begin discussion, I'd like to move Staff Recommendation Option One.
So, a second.
I got a motion and a second. Um, we are in discussion. Commissioner Command, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I try to be fair and give credit to, uh, where it's due, um, especially with staff, and then also when I'm a little disappointed, um, when I'm disappointed, I think it's important also to bring it, um, to the board's attention. And with this particular item, um, I'm feeling more on the disappointed side, uh, partially because I know this has been a, Pensacola Street and this corridor has been a topic of discussion, um, particularly, um, from our office since I was elected in 2022. And last time this came up, the, the motion that was passed unanimously amongst the board was, and this is from the record, "Accept the Report on the Crime Analysis for the 32304 and West Pensacola Street, uh, Corridor and Bring an Agenda Item with All Possible Options for Improvements to Include a Potential Master Plan for Pensacola Street Corridor and North Monroe Street." And what we have here in this op, in, in this agenda item was a status report, uh, with basically a plan that was implemented in 2004 with no new, uh, direction for us to discuss or discuss amongst the board. Why this is frustrating for me is because, the reason why we wanted to bring it up was because of my opinion, what's going on, this, this corridor has changed significantly from 2004 to now. Um, the Carney Center wasn't even on Pensacola Street until 2016. The agenda item just talks about development which is occurring east of Ocala Road. I think there's a lot of good student housing projects, there's a lot of development going on along that corridor, but when you drive on Pensacola Street, there's two different Pensacola Streets. There's east on, um, on Pensac, there's east from Ocala Road to the stadium, to west of Ocala Road to Capital Circle, uh, Southwest. And, um, I think what's going on here, the, the crime stats here from 2004, um, if you ask, reading this agenda item, it kind of implicates that, you know, things are going well. We talk about, you know, businesses that have moved into the shopping plaza, um, on Ocala Road and Pensacola Street, um, but it's not really discussing the businesses that. are struggling. Um, it's not talking about the businesses that have been robbed, um, such as the, the scooter store on Pensacola Street that was robbed, I think, two times in one month and decided to, you know, pack up and leave the corridor. Um, it's not discussing the act of crime. Um, this agenda item talks about plans for pedestrian safety, but it's not talking about the pedestrians that have been hit by vehicles. And so I, I do appreciate the effort, but I, I don't like the direction that this is going. So I, I don't plan in this, I, I don't plan at this time to propose any action. I, I do know that the Pensacola Street corridor, based on our map, is part of the South Side Action Plan. And I believe, Mr. Administrator, we have a workshop coming up.
We do.
Um, so my plan is to go into this into more further detail. Um, but I did want to just bring it to the board's attention that, you know, this is a very important corridor. Um, there are a lot of our human services and health services in this corridor and this is a, a, a part of our community. Uh, this is a huge artery for District Two that folks in our community travel day in and day out. And I lived on this corridor, um, through college in 2011 and I think the drastic change from 2011 to, to now is something that, um, should be alarming for our community. And, uh, based on this agenda item, it just kind of seems like, hey, we have a plan and things are going well, but what's on paper and what's actual visual and going on, in my opinion, are, are two different things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Artie, um, I, is Shinkton the right person to talk to or Artie? I mean, we're talking about-
Artie first.
Okay, Artie, can you clarify for us from a planning perspective, what's happening along there? And then I would like to hear from Shinkton to tell us about those crime stats and the sort of, you know, implications of what we're, what we're doing and how that might impact change. Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. When we look at the West Pensacola, uh, Sector Plan area, the West Pensacola Corridor specifically, there's a number of things that are, uh, kind of ongoing, things that have been planned and are currently kind of in the process of being implemented, uh, and things just kind of organically happening along the corridor. Especially when we look at things like master planning, we usually look at a key, a couple of key specific areas and topics. Uh, one of those being transportation. The things coming up with transportation, uh, the Department of Transportation is currently doing a planning and engineering study, a PDNE project development environment, uh, for the area between Apple Yard Drive and Capital Circle Southeast. Uh, this is a project that overlaps and is kind of consistent with the Blueprint Project, the West Side Student Gateway and staff is actively engaging DOT on that, looking at what the PDNE will include, providing comments and trying to, to leverage that project to the extent possible to kind of maximize what the intent of the West Side Student Gateway is, which is kind of like our other gateways, trying to like really look at, uh, the corridor coming into the community. They also have a resurfacing project. We've worked very closely with the Department of Transportation, uh, kind of going back quite a bit, looking at, uh, the way DOT identifies what they consider the context of Pensacola Streets. Uh, they were looking at it as being more of a rural and suburban corridor and we actually kind of went through the process, did the analysis, coordinated with them to make sure that they classified it as an urban corridor, which allows wider sidewalks and bicycle facilities and things like that. So, uh, we'll continue working with them as they go through the resurfacing project to see, uh, can we make improvements to intersections, things like that. Uh, we often coordinate with DOT on these kind of things. Uh, and then Blueprint has the University Greenway looking at multimodal connectivity between Florida State University, Tallahassee State College, Innovation Park, those things. So we see a lot of things are upcoming. Uh, they haven't happened yet, uh, but we're working very closely because the Department of Transportation does have jurisdiction over this road. So this is not a, a county road, this is not a city road, this is a state road. So we have to coordinate with them, uh, on their efforts there. Another thing that we, thing that we look at when we look at master planning in area or just kind of planning in general are the land uses. And kind of going back to that plan from 2005, the, the West Pensacola Sector Plan, it identified a number of, uh, opportunities for the corridor and pretty much immediately after that, uh, uh, plan was adopted, uh, we started moving into doing comprehensive plan amendments and rezonings. And since that time, there've been over a thousand rezonings in the proper, in that area. And you kind of see that it does take time from going from comprehensive plan amendment to a rezoning to site plan development to, uh, actually seeing the change happen. Sometimes I wish it a little faster, but planning is a fairly slow process and, uh, but we're starting to see the changes. So, you know, we took a lot of properties from lower density residential to what we call university transition. Mixed use, land use category allows up to 50 units per acre and kind of more recently we've seen Locale, we've seen a Rive, Arive, A5O, I'm not exactly sure how they pronounce that. Um, and so we've seen a lot of changes along the corridor. In fact, when I was at Florida State University, basically when this plan was adopted, uh, it looks very different today than it did then and that's because those land use changes are now releasing the effect of those. Uh, we've worked with Steve Leoni, who owns the, um, uh, the, the shopping center there with the Aldi's and worked with him to amend his PUD and almost immediately after that, you saw the Starbucks go in and some changes there. So, uh, we're starting to see new businesses, we're starting to see changes in terms of the types of housing, we're starting to see more density. It's just kind of been a process that has been underway for quite a while, uh, but we see those changes happening now. Uh, and also we have a in-house design studio, uh, like to boast, uh, design works as much as possible in the plan department. And, uh, over the, um, uh, since 2017 at least, I know that we've had over 40, uh, site assistance that have been provided in that location, in that area. Uh, 68% of those have happened since 2020. So we've been providing site assistance to, uh, developers along the, uh, the corridor for a number of years, uh, but we've seen a lot more interest just within the past-
Okay, Artie, I think, I, I hate to cut you off with your filibuster-ness a little bit. Commissioner, um, Command has some questions for you.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, I don't, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's a, it's a question, just a, just a more of a follow-up statement. Artie, I appreciate, I appreciate the insight and, um, but I think like that exact testament that you're giving publicly is what's very, very frustrating because what you're sitting here saying about Pensacola Street is that everything's okay, it just takes time. What I'm saying is since 2004 and particularly since I lived on that corridor in 2011, it is declining. And Shinkton, you were there in the community meeting that we had with, with Pensacola Street families and businesses and they are very, very upset with what we are doing as a government and they made it very well known that they are not happy. And so, um, what I, what I, what I, I don't want us as a board, and then this is just my opinion, I mean, but I, I don't think it's, um, appropriate just to sit here and say that everything's going fine, it just needs more time, right? Um, I would say time has not been on our side thus far on Pensacola Street. And again, this is very, very important, um, to our constituents and, um, Shinkton, um, it looks like you want to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, um, Artie, thank you. What I would like to hear is Shinkton's, you know, perspective on how the human services aspect of it, side of it, intermeshes with all the planning improvements that Artie says are on the way in terms of just generally improve, and I don't need a five-minute speech, just generally improving the quality of life along that corridor to address Commissioner Command's concerns. I understand that it's, there's challenges, it's a state road, it's not in, it's in the city limits. I get all that, but like, what can we do to put some traction underneath this boat, all right? I mean, underneath this car? So I, I think that's generally the idea, right?
Absolutely, Commissioner. So, um, one of the things that's happening as you adopted as part of your strategic initiative, we are actively working with the Big Ben Continuum of Core to adopt a corridor plan for Pensacola Street as well as North Monroe Street and downtown, um, to actually address specifically issues regarding homelessness, because I know that's a significant issue in those specific areas to see how we better address homelessness through better engagement with unsheltered homelessness as well as engaging those neighborhoods, um, so that way they're aware of how we can, um, reduce the impacts of homelessness in those areas. The other thing though is in addition to that, when you were talking about, um, issues regarding crimes, um, as part of that process, um, there's also been active utilization of installing cameras that the city has done that's connected to the real-time center that the county fund, um, assisted in funding the real-time center so that way it can help in, um, addressing and looking at issues of, um, any crimes in those areas, also being able to get, um, license plates so that way that information can be then utilized real-time by, um, law enforcement, be it LCSO or TBD to address, um, the issues of, um, of crime. The other thing is going back to some of the businesses, um, the county in partnership with the city invested at the CLC, the establishment of a community outreach coordinator at the CLC. That person has worked like, for example, when new businesses like the, um, Colombian Restaurant that opened on Pensacola Street came on, the first thing that that individual did is meet with the new, um, owners when the owners moved from being a, a, um, mobile food truck to an actual, um, installed institution on Pensacola Street, met with them to talk about, hey, how can we better address any issues you may have regarding homelessness? Um, the host deputies, as you all know, the county funds also have met with businesses in those areas consistently to also be able to address, um, those issues that they, that they may have. The last thing I'll add is that, um, Commissioner, is that in preparing the corridor plans, something that's critical and we've been working with the team here at Planning or the CLC has, is to actually hold events later this spring in which they will, um, bring, um, they will invite, invite members of Pensacola Street, be it businesses and residents, to actually do a form of like, where's that heavy? Like a charrettes almost, so that way they can talk about, okay, let's go line by line about everything that's happening by the county, the city, through the blueprint, through the state regarding improvements in those areas, but as well as where are some of those deficits so that way we can identify in addressing homelessness and other human services needs on Pensacola Street.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, Shinkton, with the, is there, the corridor plan and this, pays on this agenda item says was, was established in 2004, 2005. What is, um, I guess what I would like to see personally is as we implement these chains, I think we need to adapt our, our master plan for Pensacola Street to reflect the current issues that are ongoing with Pensacola Street. Pensacola Street in 2004, when, when this was established, was a primary, a primary hub for student housing and that has shifted east to college town and all the development going on East Tennessee Street. And so I just think it's important for our planning is to make sure we're updating our master plan for Pensacola Street to reflect the state of it now and also the ongoing issues which I believe have changed since then. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Shinkton, thank you and, and thank you, Artie, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you.
Commissioner Proctor, you're next, and Commissioner O'Keefe.
I think, um, Commissioner Command does have a valid point, but Artie, I believe too that, that what you're saying, if, if I could put it in my own words, is that we are, it is not the greatest situation on Pensacola Street, but some progress is being made. And I can tell you, 2004, 2005 is when I decided to come back and finish my degree, actually 2005, at Florida State and you're right, um, Pensacola Street was much different then. It was student housing, the homeless shelter wasn't there, I think Hope might have been there. Um, but, you know, on the other end, I mean, if we went down Pensacola Street, it, it basically looked the same. The corridor looked the same, right? Um, I remember a day Commissioner Proctor and others who were older who, who've been here, Shinkton as well, where you could drive straight through campus on Pensacola Street, can't do that anymore, but you could. Um, the point that you make, Commissioner Command, is valid in that when we move the shelter, Kearney Center, to Pensacola Street, it basically made Pensacola Street a, a, a corridor, uh, for those that are homeless, if I, if I can say it that way. I mean, you have Hope, uh, who is a family shelter, you have, um, the Kearney Center who is for adults and not too far from it, you have CCYS, which is just around the corner. So that whole corridor in 32304 Pensacola Street, you, you, I mean, that's where you're going to see the majority, uh, of our homeless, of our homeless neighbors. Um, and, and, and what you've seen, brought this up too, development happening from the university out. So all the student housing that used to be on that side of Pensacola Street has, um, on, on the side closer to TCC from Ocala of Pensacola Street is now going towards the stadium, uh, and you see all the development there and it's coming down. What's encouraging for me is the fact that you do see, uh, the Colombian Restaurant, you see Starbucks, you see those things start to come into that shopping center, which means that something good is going on there. But you brought up the point of time. It took us time to get to the point that we're on, that we are on Pensacola Street. It's going to take us time to move away from it too. Uh, that, that the issue of trying to figure out how we, how we deal with homelessness in, in, in the unhoused on Pensacola Street is not one that's going to be easily solved, it's not one that's going to be solved tomorrow unless, unless we're able to find land and money to build more beds and rooms for those who are homeless because, that, that are coming towards Pensacola Street. And so could we update the plan? And Artie, I, I just called your name to say, I, I understand where you're coming from, you can sit if you want to. Should we, should we talk about in that, in that master plan, the evolution of Pensacola Street and how now what we were dealing with in 2004 and 2005 is much different because of the look in, in the, in the folks who are on Pensacola Street? Absolutely. Have we updated, and this might be a Shinkton or, 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 or question, have we updated that master plan? Cause that's 20 years ago. Have you updated the master plan to include the issues that we're having now in the way, in the services that are provided on Pensacola Street? Cause as I remember it, I don't even think Goodwill was on Pensacola Street at the time that, that the, the center that was there wasn't there in 2004. So have we updated the master plan to include some of those things and how we plan to deal with those things in the future?
Uh, Commissioner, um, no, we've not updated the master plan formally, uh, but also note that it's not really within the jurisdiction of this board to do so. Uh, any kind of master plan that looks at things like transportation would need to look at who has jurisdiction over the-
Exactly.
-that corridor, which would be the Department of Transportation. Uh, any jurisdiction over things like land uses, uh, whether something like a Goodwill can be there or not, completely within the city of Tallahassee's jurisdiction, uh, they are the only ones who vote on comprehensive plan amendments, rezonings or land development code regulations for this area because within city limits.
The original master plan was created by the city?
It was.
Yes. So I, I think, I'm, I'm, you guys know me well enough to know, I'm all about jurisdictional, you know, respect. So, you know, if, if anything, if, if there's a, if there's a, a inquiry here or a thought here that we should, um, update that master plan, maybe we should reach out to the city to ask if they would consider re-updating the master plan as far as the road is concerned, uh, maybe even reaching out to, uh, the state to see what their thoughts are there. But I think, uh, Gain Street, as we, when we did the improvements, was that a county, is Gain Street a county road or state road?
State road, uh, but it was acquired by the city to be able to make those changes.
Right. And because we were able to do that, of course, we can remember long ago what was on Gain Street, because we were able to acquire that road and then do all the transportation changes that were made and multimodal and all that kind of stuff, get the land ready, um, that we were able to have more control to, to, to move faster. But even, even once Blueprint did what it did, the CRE did what it did, it still took, what, five, six years before real development started to come? So even with that, when you say it takes time, it does take time and I, and I can understand the urgency of the folks who are in, uh, 32304 to say we need to move faster, but if we don't have control, there's, there's, there's not a faster. We could, we could, again, we can ask the city to be more aggressive, we can ask the state and transportation to be more aggressive, our, my, my brothers and sisters on the CRTPA, we can push the issue a little more. Uh, but, but when it comes down to this board and what we can do, um, we, most we can do right now, and I hate to say it this way, is, is, is talk, uh, and advocate on behalf of the folks who live in that corridor to say that they want more and they'd like to see more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Proctor, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I feel frustration of Commissioner Command. First of all, I'm, I'm blown away by Artie's statement that, uh, the state did not view Pensacola, uh, well, I'm sorry, that the state views Pensacola as a, as a rural, uh, corridor. That's amazing. What state, does the state recognize Pensacola Street as something rural? So from the starting point, if that's their premise, um, y'all, we's, we's in big trouble. If that's, and so that our staff has to go work with the state to, uh, alter their perspective, uh, that, that ain't no rural road, we started to have zero. So that's a problem that we're trying to reconcile. This crossroad thing, uh, which you all remember, uh, we, we were dealing with the legal enforcement- This crossroad thing, which you all remember, we were dealing with the legal enforcement against vagrancy, and the challenge was whether to criminalize homelessness. Sheriff, we were about to drop an ordinance hammer, and Sheriff McNeil avail our senses of humanitarian empathy. And this board, I believe we funded positions for outreach to take an inventory of who they, homeless were, as much information as could be gathered, and I guess it's put in a database. We paused, and we thought, and we waited for, and thought that this working with population would somehow slow the deterioration, I'll use your word, Commissioner, of that corridor down. And what seems to me, right now where we are, is that notwithstanding the sheriff's outreach officers and taking sort of a social work approach and not a criminal enforcement there, is that we have not yet, Shinkton, come up with a plan that graduates people who are, we've got two institutions feeding into tributaries into Pensacola. We got the jail with people getting out, and we've got the homeless center. And those two different institutions, each dump people out every day over Pensacola Street, and it's a cycle that does not stop. But what we have not identified, Commissioner Maddox, is a, is a graduated or graduating plan that meets people on day one coming out of jail and whether they go next. So, the transition from jail to homes is what we've tried to do with the P S C C money. We have, I don't know where, but that's what we've been trying to do, and right there is the beginning point. But what is needed to add value is we've, we've got to graduate people in meeting them in that corridor with the next steps. So, when we say affordable housing, blah, blah, it starts with a job or something, and that's where I think there's a breakdown. So, Commissioner, feeling your pain, but when the state is saying they see a rural, we got a lot of work to do. And we have put some money to meet folk there into housing that it won't be saturated with human decay.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner O'Keefe going to bring it home.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Caban, for bringing this up. This is important, and as I'll echo, I think my colleagues, I'm ready to support, as we go forward, anything that we can do to help. So, I, '04 is a long time ago for having a plan. Now, if that was done by the city and that's not our authority, then I think it's for some advocacy to the city to reach out. In fact, in 2004, I lived in student housing directly, it was Villa del Lago at the time, directly across from where the Kearney Center is now. It was very different. And so, it's definitely something we need to be working towards, like everything, up to our authority and then collaborating with our partners where it calls for them. One thing I think that we can do and might be a helpful update is, part of the issue is the folks who hang around during the day when, when they're not staying at the Kearney Center or someone else around there. And we have put in new funding and initiatives, I believe last year, to help address that. When I was out, and if I remember correctly, let the record show, Shinkton's nodding from the audience. If I remember correctly, the idea of that new funding was day services so that people had places to go at the Kearney Center, but also, I believe the intention was to try to find partners that do day services and activity, like casework and connect with jobs and stuff in other areas of town to sort of spread people out. I don't know if that's happening yet, but we're coming up on a year, and so I think it would be time to get a report on how that is going, how effective it is as we go forth. Because I've been out to meet with people who are unhoused recently and in the past, and one thing that I was hearing repeatedly is that they're not getting day services, that they're not able. Met with a few people that, when I was out there recently, where they were told, we'll go back to the center to get your phone or to get a mailbox, and they said, oh, well, it's been, it's closed, they stopped doing day services because this and that. And so, I think if we're funding that, and our goal is to have day services and to expand services to other places, perhaps an update, which we may already be getting this spring as a year passes from when we implement that plan, might help, because that seems to be a core issue that is part of what we're trying to influence.
So, point of order, the chair had to step out of the chambers, so I cannot hold the gavel and make the, make the motion. So, I'm going to withdraw my motion and look for a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation and also to, I have a letter from the chair sent to the city to ask, to inquire about an update of the corridor plan that's in place.
I second that motion, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to make a comment.
Commissioner Cummings.
I second.
Did you say you have comment?
Yes, just, just for clarification, I appreciate the discussion about that particular corridor, and I just, I understand and just recognize the issue of Madam Accountant Attorney with that, I guess with the dual jurisdiction with the county and the city as far as that corridor is concerned, but Shinkton mentioned when he was discussing that they were planning some, I believe, upcoming meetings to have a coordinated plan, did I hear that correct, with the city and the county representatives to address some of those issues that Commissioner Caban raised?
Well, that's correct, except it's not the master plan, so it's not the plan that the city has. It's, it's a plan that the, that the C O C has been working on for the last couple of years now to actually establish plans in those corridors in our community that has high concentration of homelessness, especially unsheltered homelessness. And so, they've been working with the county, the city, sheriff's office, to actually look to see how we can better engage those homelessness individuals there so we can reduce the homelessness, but as well as engage the neighbors and the businesses in those areas, so that way we have a plan in place to say, how do we do that in those specific areas in partnership with those neighborhoods?
Awesome. And just a follow-up, so if the city is at the table and the county's at the table and all those service providers and Commissioner Caban is correct, many of those have, they're, you know, housed, their headquarters are on that corridor, so to speak. That means we do have the city at the table. Does that have the potential of maybe positively affecting the overall master plan, which I understand we don't have any, any control over? Or is that part, is that a part of the goal to get all of the interested parties together so we can look at it holistically?
It may. We do have, like I said before, our planning team, that's also been part of in helping assist exactly with the C O C of how to, how to better engage those neighborhoods with the issues in the area, but really, the primary focus again of those plans is specifically in the area of homelessness and how do we improve those areas and the quality of life.
But, but from your, just from your standpoint and working there, do you feel that we, from a county standpoint, we're doing really all we can to the extent that we can as far as jurisdiction is concerned, because I know our hands are tied in certain areas?
Yes, for the county, I think we're doing quite a bit. As Commissioner O'Keefe mentioned, we do have day services that we are funding, commissioners. When you established line item funding for the shelters, part of it was continuation of day services, because we had provided previously was one-time funding, federal dollars, but then with the establishment of line item funding, we, that was one of the requirements that they continue to provide those services.
Right. And I just wanted, Mr. Vice Chair, just thanks, staff, for this, you know, for the, for the report, giving us an analysis, the reality of really where we are, and then for you all explaining, you know, from the jurisdictional standpoint, what we can, cannot do, but I think you're doing a great job pulling all the interested parties together. That's all we can do, and I think every, the interested parties, specifically the city, probably has the same sentiment that we have, and I think in the long run and hopefully in the short run, we'll start seeing some improvements. And the needle will just start moving from a positive standpoint. We gotta, we gotta work together. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Proctor, you have a last comment you said?
Yes, sir. I don't think there's not an unwillingness to work together. I think that we've not identified the question, what, what do we want Pensacola Street to be, to become, to look like? What is our goal? I've not heard one yet. Do we want to reduce by 20% people loitering? We want to get rid of that entirely? I don't know what the goal is, and I don't think that this body has set a policy objective as to what would be an acceptable level of just human meandering. I don't know. So, that's probably something we need to, to look at, what, what we want that area to be. Is it true that you, no one has access to the homeless shelter during the day except mothers with children? Is that accurate? So, does anyone know? How do you gain access and have somewhere to go during the day?
You're talking about for the?
Kearney Center.
The Kearney Center, no. Adults can go, so people come from Hope Shelter can go to Kearney Center for day services during the day.
Okay. We need additional day services during the day.
One point, one point, actually, I think what we need to know, how many people actually using those day services?
Yes.
Because, because, Mr. Proctor, to be honest with you, like, this is, this is my thing. We pay for those day services, but, and they are at Kearney, and folks from our shelter at Hope can't go over to Kearney to use those day services, but how many of the folks who are actually going to Kearney, going to Hope, coming in and using those day services, I think are the number that we need to look at, because I think if we look at that number, we'll find out is, there's not as many as we would hope for.
Well, the continuity of tightening up, giving people somewhere to go, I'm sure the county attorney would tell us that we can't mandate people, you know, what, what daycare service they had to go to, but we might consider which services are more attractive than others, and we gotta keep working with it.
Yeah, so, one of the things that we do continue to do, though, as part of day services, though, is that you do have Kearney Center, again, dollars that the county has invested in, bus going around certain concentrated areas, and those areas include downtown, North Monroe Street, the T M H Hospital, to actually encourage and get folks to come from those areas and into the Kearney Center for day services, with the primary goal of hopefully, hopefully that they will not stay on in those unsheltered areas and those camps and actually come and not just utilize the day services, but actually utilize the beds overnight in those areas, so that way, then when you talk about the planned commissioner, if they're not from our community, getting them back to their place of origin.
Okay, I, I thank you for mentioning that, that bad word that the legislature of Florida hates, and I'm not talking about global warming, but I am talking about mental health, and I'm not qualified, Commissioner Van, nor certified to know who's mentally unhealthy, but just from a layman's observation of that area driving, that area, mental health is condensed and thriving in the area, and I don't know how we inject or intervene in that way, too. And I think that it adds to the chronic festering of people in the area and unable to find a roadmap, a compass, to leave it, to get out of that stagnant space, and that's a problem, and I encourage y'all not letting it go. But we're standing with you, Commissioner Caban, you're not alone on that Pensacola Street. It's a great corridor, and none of us want to see it deteriorate further.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. We got a motion from Commissioner Caban, second from Commissioner Maddox. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so, sorry, so Commissioner Maddox had the motion and Commissioner Cummings had the second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioners, we got general business coming up, we only got four items. I would like to take a 30-minute recess and come back at 5:15. We don't have a public hearing at 6:00, so we can go ahead and take our break now, come back and start general business, or if you would rather, we can go to item number 10. I just don't know if we're going to get mired down on that because it's a ratification. Skip it. I'm trying to be collegial, man. Okay, we're going to take a 30-minute recess, we'll be back at 5:00, 5:15, we'll call it 5:15. We'll call it 5:15.
Business. Um, all right, Mr. County Administrator, I think we are on general business, item number 10.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item number 10 seeks the Board's ratification of actions taken at your January 27th Board Retreat. Commissioners, all the material is before you. Again, it reflects all the action taken by the Board, and we have no speakers on this item. Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, um, well, I only got two Commissioners up here. Would you, either one of you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move with exception to the recommendation.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a motion on item number 10 and a second by Commissioner Proctor for staff recommendation. We are in discussion. Anybody want to discuss? I don't, do we, four enough, four can vote, right? Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion on item 10, the ratification of, of Retreat items. Anybody? Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, I just want to just echo my sentiments for a great retreat. I think you chaired a great retreat, and we had some great information from all of our employees in the various heads of various departments. So it was just, it was very, very enlightening, and then we were able to address other and add to our plan, other, add to our strategic plan, other areas of concern. So it was just a great retreat, so those are just my positive comments. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator and your staff.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Cummings, I agree and want to echo that. Staff did an amazing job, great time at Bradley's Country Store. Thank you all for making the trip out there. Beautiful setting, good group pick, and I think we did a lot of good business on this item. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we've got a motion by Commissioner Cummings, second by Commissioner Proctor for staff recommendation on item number 10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 11 seeks your approval to award Next Generation 911's system services. The, the item before you seeks to award the contract to NGA 911 LLC for the implementation of Next Generation 911 to enhance emergency communication capabilities and assure stability, effective and efficient response to communities' needs. You've got a lot of information here, Commissioners, this is a, a large transition and an upgrade on our 911 system. Happy to answer any questions you have, we have no speakers on this item, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Maddox, second from Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm just interested to know that, does this system integrate with all of the agencies? Is it compatible to, have we left FAMU and TS, TSU on the sideline? And I'm mindful of when we, back in those 900 megahertz days, I'm going back to that reference, how universal and universally plugged are the different agencies that utilize emergency services?
Commissioner Proctor, I, Mr. Chair, I just, I seldom do this, but I just have to correct you, Commissioner Proctor, you go back to the UHF days. But, but Mr. Peters can answer the question.
Yes, sir, yes, Commissioner, yes, this will include our university police dispatch centers and Capitol Police's dispatch centers, secondary primary, or secondary answering points for 911. Calls primarily are answered by the CDA if they are calls about services on those campuses, this system, they will have terminals at those places where those calls can automatically be on those call takers terminals.
I, I, I know that our chairman is the, in the emergency situations, is a triggering voice, pivotal for certain decisions in our community. But in terms of the agencies themselves, now that FEMA may, may not be around, what are the ranks of who's calling the shots? Is it the states in an emergency situation? Is it FEMA, or is it us? And I've seen some jockeying, if you will, seemingly not from our county, but from other agencies which want to flex, to show and say that they're in charge. Is, has there been any critical movement with, in respect to the rankings of who has what charge in an emergency situation?
Yeah, yes, sir. When it comes to disasters, you know, there is a saying that all disasters are local. Leon County does maintain command and control of our resources here locally. We request assistance from the state of Florida during disasters, and they can provide assistance to Leon County, they provide assistance to the other counties of the state of Florida. When it comes to federal aid, that, that's a request for federal disaster assistance. And currently, as things stand, you know, the way the law is written, that has to come from the governor of a state to request federal assistance. I, I think at this time, we, we've heard and seen that there's a committee to assess the effectiveness of FEMA, and at this point, they've not convened and made any recommendations. So as of this moment, that process to request federal assistance hasn't changed, that we've been, been notified of. So that's, it's still going to be the process. Leon County has command and control of our, of our local response, we can request assistance for state response assistance and mutual aid. Federal disaster assistance would require a request from the governor to the President of the United States.
I, I had mentioned this at the retreat, Commissioners, you've heard me ask, I don't think it was premature, but an exercise for us in the what-if category of what if there is no FEMA, or what if our community like, like California just can't get a call back from the feds, FEMA? What if we don't have federal assistance? And the sense of federal aid support which existed, stuff that's articulated in the Constitution is just not adhered to. And I know that that's somewhat rhetorical, but at the same time, it's something that's, if you look at California, their experiences in terms of receiving federal support, I mean, it's real. And I will think that we ought to at some point in the near future, look at our emergency processes as if we had to go it along. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Proctor, all right, we've got a, a motion and a second. Can y'all remind me, I think Commissioner Maddox was my, motion Commissioner Minor was the second, on item 11, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 12 seeks the Board's consideration of an appointment of a nominated citizen to the Advisory Committee on Quality Growth and an eligible applicant to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. As a reminder, Commissioners, I know that Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner O'Keefe brought this up at the January meeting, but the applicant for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meets the qualification for the new membership category recently adopted by the Board to ensure that the committee membership includes a person that has benefited from affordable housing and/or experienced eviction. And the applicant, Ms. James, is a recent client of the county's housing services program, and so we're recommending options one and two. Happy to answer any questions, we have no speakers on this item.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move option one for Department of Audra Fournier to the Advisory Committee for Quality Growth, and I move option two for Kenesha James to be appointed to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
All right, we've got a motion and a second by Vice Chair Caban. We're in discussion. Commissioner Cummings, would you like to discuss?
No discussion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, we've got a motion and a second, a motion by Commissioner Cummings, second by Vice Chair Caban. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it passes unanimously. Mr. County Administrator, we're on to our last item on general business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 13, your final item on the agenda is a state and federal legislative update, which the Board requested at your last meeting to, to receive an update on the legislation recently passed by the Florida Legislature related to illegal immigration. In addition, we have our federal lobbyist from Squire Patent Boggs here, Ms. Karen Street. She's with us today to provide an update on the various federal executive actions that have been issued over the past few weeks. And at this point, I'll hand it off to Nikki to introduce the item, and Ms. Street, Nikki.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As requested at your last meeting, this item provides a legislative, legislative update, including an overview of the Trump Act recently passed by the Florida Legislature, which is now likely moot, given that the special, another special session has been convened this afternoon to pass a new package of bills related to illegal immigration. We will continue to monitor, monitor the development of these bills, which are anticipated to be considered by the House and Senate on the floor later this week. In addition, this item provides an overview of the federal executive actions recently taken by the new administration. As outlined in the item, President Trump has issued over 75 executive actions since his inauguration less than a month ago. These executive actions have been wide-ranging, directing actions in areas such as immigration, government reform, and international trade and tariffs. The item before you outlines select actions that will or anticipated to have an impact at the local level. We also have our new federal lobbyist, Ms. Karen Street from Squire Patent Boggs here with us today to provide a brief presentation on those executive actions, as well as a federal outlook on what to expect up in Washington, Washington DC in the coming weeks. So with that, Commissioners, I'd like to hand it over to Karen to introduce herself and provide an update.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and I have to say, as a proud graduate of Howard University, I'm so glad I came the day that
You know.
The Marching 100 was recognized. It's hard to, hard to follow, but I'll, I'll try. Squire Patent Boggs is very pleased to continue our representation of Leon County. I personally have been with the firm since 2021. Before that, I spent about 14 years on Capitol Hill. The first 10 was spent largely with the Senate Majority Leader Harry Reid, doing a lot of work towards economic development with state and local governments, particularly as the 2008 credit crisis hit. And then ironically, at the onset of the first Trump administration, I transitioned to the House side to work for the Congressional Black Caucus. I was also Chief of Staff to Rep. Karen Bass, who went on to become Mayor of Los Angeles. So I, and another kind of point of personal privilege, I have an aunt that lived here almost all of her adult life in Tallahassee. She also worked for the Florida Lottery for over 30 years, so I have many fond memories of, of Tallahassee. And so this really is a full circle moment, and I have an affinity to local governments in general, and this one in particular. So I'd like to mention a couple of the actions coming out of Washington. It's important to note, obviously, the, the Trump administration has really hit the ground running with the second term. It's, we're going to talk about the executive orders, but it's important to highlight two caveats. One is that an executive order may hold the force of law if it is directed under the powers enumerated for the President under Article II of the Constitution, or Congress's implicit or explicit delegation of powers to the President. It is not unusual for presidential executive action to be challenged legally, but it is worth noting that this administration in particular is really trying to push the envelope and kind of stretch presidential power as much as possible to advance the, the agenda before us. That necessarily means that there's a lot of litigation, and that means there's a lot of uncertainty. So there are some murky waters that we have to navigate in the coming weeks and months, but what is very certain is that these executive actions are a very clear demonstration of the administration's priorities, and what cannot be done strictly through executive action is certainly fair game for congressional action, particularly as Republicans control both chambers of Congress. So I'm going to discuss a couple of executive orders, particularly, obviously, there have been so many, but we wanted to highlight some that are particularly relevant to state and local governments. And I would start more broadly with the federal funding freeze, which still has a lot of uncertainty around it. So on day one, President Trump issued seven executive orders pausing federal funding, but around certain specific areas that you can imagine, abortion, immigration, foreign aid, energy and environment, DEI initiatives, and gender ideology. Now that was day one. A week later, the Office of Management and Budget followed up with a memo that broadened the funding freeze to all federal government aid. Quite frankly, that created a lot of consternation in Washington, both Republicans and Democrats, and within two days, litigation issued, litigation resulted in an injunction halting both the OMB memo as well as the initial freeze. The, the challenge here is that while the White House has rescinded the OMB memo, they have also given directions to agencies that they can still temporarily pause funding if it does not adhere to the administration's priorities. So there is a lot of differences in terms of how funding is flowing through different agencies, depending upon, you know, Department of Energy versus Housing and Urban Development. There's no consistency at this point. And so even just recently, as yesterday, the federal judge in Rhode Island has, has called on the administration for not actually adhering to the temporary restraining order and calling on the Department of Justice to investigate which agencies are and are not complying with that, with that, that temporary restraining order. We're ultimately headed towards appeals that will likely go to the Supreme We're ultimately headed towards appeals that will likely go to the Supreme Court. There could be some very serious constitutional questions in order. I don't think anyone can read the tea leaves to tell you exactly how this is going to shake out, but I do want to recognize, Commissioner Proctor, we were discussing earlier, kind of the importance of recognizing what federal funding the county relies upon and starting to think strategically about what happens if that funding is not available, and how to prioritize that federal funding in the coming weeks and months. Other executive orders, the Unleashing American Energy was one of the orders that was issued on day one. Obviously, it's a shift in the administration's policy around energy priorities, environmental regulations, et cetera. But the main thrust here is that it's attacking, too, of President Biden's kind of hallmark legislative accomplishments, the Inflation Reduction Act and the Investment in Infrastructure and Jobs Act, which both had several points focused on energy and environmental justice issues. This funding is subject to pauses, not necessarily through executive action and OMB memos, but based on strictly agency perspective as to whether or not specific funding streams adhere to the administration's priorities. So again, a lot of uncertainty here. There's also been some executive actions against diversity, equity, and inclusion. Just recently, a couple of hours ago, a federal court was requiring the administration to put back public health information on government websites related to health equity issues. There's currently a lawsuit in Maryland challenging the issues around DEI. Obviously, this is a huge priority for this administration as well as Congress. So even if there is a limit to what can be done around DEI, particularly around agencies and government contracting, certainly, this is something that's ripe for congressional action in the House and the Senate. We mentioned emergency management. There have been some interesting discussions around the elimination of FEMA. But again, this gets back to what I said at the top, the caveat that executive orders do not always have the force of law, and the President cannot unilaterally eliminate an agency that was created by Congress. Certainly, he can redirect priorities and conduct certain oversight, et cetera, particularly as it relates to his concern about political bias in the application of emergency assistance. But it's, we have some interesting thoughts around the idea of the elimination of FEMA, because if there is a disaster and the President wants to stand in the wake of that disaster and say, "I'm here to help save the day," how do you do that if you don't actually have an agency that has a direct role? It cedes a lot of power to state and local governments that this particular President might not want to give up. We have also seen, obviously, a lot of executive actions around immigration. Particularly, something of note here is the requirement for state and local governments to halt any funding that could be going to unlawfully or unauthorized provisions going to illegal aliens. Some of the challenges that we've seen with these executive actions is that they're just arbitrarily broad. If you don't give state and local governments sufficient guidance in terms of what is and is not unlawful, then it's difficult to hold them accountable. And this is one of those cases where it's unclear what is and is not authorized assistance. And accordingly, it is subject to two lawsuits, and we will see how this plays out in the court system. We are not surprised to see lots of action on tariffs. There are currently two major countries at play here, Mexico and Canada. And while the tariffs that have been announced have been temporarily halted for a month, it's important to kind of pull back and recognize the art of the deal here. President Trump does not think about tariffs in the context of pure economic policy, but as a lever to pull in negotiations around other policies like illegal immigration and the flow of illegal drugs. We are anticipating a number of actions that could be targeted towards the European Union, certainly China, and that's all leverage for this administration to engage with those governments, to exact a pound of flesh for his priorities. Not included in this slide, but certainly relevant and impactful on a number of businesses, ultimately consumers, are tariffs related to steel and aluminum. And it's important to recognize that these tariffs are compounding. So there is no offset one for the other. You could see items coming into the U.S. with, you know, as much as a 75% tariff, which will certainly flow to consumers. I want to provide a brief update on government funding. Currently, government funding runs out on March 14th. There are varying viewpoints on how we'll move forward with government funding at this stage. And it's because, despite the fact that Republicans control both the House and the Senate, they have very different viewpoints on how to move forward that agenda. So as it relates to government funding, the Senate Republicans are interested in moving forward with the traditional method of going through each of the 12 appropriation bills, marking them up, and moving to full-year appropriations through the end of September. The House, which has a very slim vote of essentially one vote for the majority, is concerned that they won't actually have the votes to move forward with all of those appropriations bills. So in the most recent days, the conversation looks like we're moving towards a full-year continuing resolution. That's important because it means that funding levels are flat. There's also this element of sequestration, which hits in April, which means that there's also an automatic hit to government funding appropriations, which is kind of meant to force Republicans and Democrats to the table to actually engage and negotiate on appropriations. But if you're interested in cutting government spending anyway, you might not be concerned about sequestration. So it's possible that we could have a full-year CR, but they're very far apart at this point, and there are also concerns about possibly a temporary government shutdown. The last point I'll mention is reconciliation. Reconciliation is this process whereby, through a simple majority in both the House and the Senate, one party can pass their agenda. Republicans, again, are not on the same page as to how to advance that agenda. It's not just tax reform, which the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act expires at the end of 2025. It's not just tax reform that they want to get done. They also want to do a big, one big, beautiful bill, potentially, that touches on border security and energy permitting and whatever else they want to roll up into a spending package. The Senate thinks that it's smarter to go with a two-step approach, to take some of those agenda items and get them out of the way, and then come to tax reform. The House, with that one-seat majority, is concerned that they can't take multiple votes. And it's important to recognize that there is significant pressure in Washington to address the debt and deficit. That is coupled with the reality that if you were to have a clean passage of the tax cuts from 2017, it's a net cost of about $4.7 trillion. That doesn't include the campaign promises from President Trump that they're going to need to consider if they want the President to actually pass or sign the bill into law. So there are extraordinary revenue pressures on this Congress, and it's certainly relevant to Leon County, because there is a chance that tax reform becomes a victim of Congress's inaction. I don't think it's a high likelihood, but it's a possibility. If that were to happen, tax rates would increase on almost every resident of this county, and that's certainly relevant. It's also relevant because of the massive spending cuts that might be required, either in reconciliation or in tax reform. It could certainly impact residents immediately, things like Medicaid, which temporarily or historically has not been on the table, but now is, or SNAP benefits. It could also impact long-term projects like infrastructure funding. There are certainly a number of federal bills that have to be reauthorized in the next two or three years that could get caught up in these spending fights. So a lot to consume, a lot of uncertainty, a lot of challenges, but that's why you have Representatives in D.C. I want to mention, I'm one of many. Squire Patton Boggs really prides itself on being very bipartisan, so that we have you covered on both sides of the aisle and both ends of Pennsylvania Avenue from Congress to the White House. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we need a motion and a second, and then we can get in discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move staff recommendation for the report.
Okay, we've got a motion.
I second it, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner O'Keefe, and we are in discussion. Feel free to ask questions and whatever.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for being here, and I'm glad you got a chance to see the Marching 100. Two questions for you, and I'm not expecting you to have solid responses to either one of these, just because of the volatile nature of what we're dealing with at the moment. But the first question I had is regarding the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All program, the grant program that was passed in 2021 as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law and then allocated for, I think, five fiscal years. I think that allocation ends in fiscal year 2026. We have some projects here, as well as the city of Tallahassee has some projects that have already been awarded. We want to apply for one this coming year in the hopes of getting a grant award under Safe Streets for All for a major corridor. Do you have any guess or hint what's going to happen to that funding? I've spoken to some of our staff in the CRTPA, and they basically said, "Well, they would have to change the law. Congress would have to basically change that budget allocation for the allocations that have already been made." But can you shed any light on that, and if you have any best guess on what the future of that program's going to be?
So I think that there are some guestimations that we can make. For example, there was a raised grant funding opportunity that was open under the prior administration that actually expired under this administration. So it opened up in November and it closed, I think, January 30th. There was a conversation about whether or not this administration would poorly view applications under that grant program that was administered under the prior administration. I think that the reality is, the new administration in carrying out and executing the funding that's already been allocated under IIJA will have an opportunity to reprioritize what it considers important. And quite frankly, if the prior notice of funding opportunity under that program kind of highlighted equity, inclusion, accessibility, I would not expect that in this new iteration. So there might be a way to craft a narrative that sounds, not to have a pun intended, but more inclusive and less partisan, that could be successful. But that's certainly something that we can track. I think we could also be looking at other communities with varying political leanings that might have an interest and priority around that program to determine how the administration would approach it.
Yeah, some of our staff have said that with Safe Streets for All, we might have the specific criteria within the application process coming up to be changed differently. And so the responses that our application should have in terms of the content, those applications might change in order to satisfy or optimize the chances of our application being selected.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. The second question I had is very similar regarding broadband access under NTIA and the BEAT funding and the digital capacity grant programs. Same question for those, you know, actually a little bit different, because my understanding is that the federal government has basically designated the BEAT funding and digital capacity funding to the states, because Florida Commerce is managing the grant distribution for the state of Florida. Is my understanding of that correct? Has the funding already been allocated to the states, and the states is now the distributor of those funds? Or is that subject to the same volatility we see in D.C. right now regarding the BEAT program and the digital access, digital capacity grants?
So two things. I believe the BEAT funding was allocated in several tranches. So it could be that the latest tranche was allocated to the state government. There could be subsequent tranches that have not been. However, when we received, after January 27th, the OMB memo halting all federal funding, there was an exercise around how that impacted BEAT funding, and the analysis was that that program would be held harmless. And from our experience with other local governments, it was. I think the other caveat here is that ultimately, that is funding that goes to the benefit of the private sector and in terms of being able to purchase services.
From the providers, right.
Exactly. And I think that creates a caveat that is different from, say, something like SNAP funding.
Got it, great, thank you. Thank you very much for your time and for coming here, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for a very comprehensive report on what is a understated, fast-moving environment. I wanted to ask about the tax, what you talk about, what you call it as the tax reform. It is, am I understanding correctly, that if you set aside campaign promises and nothing is done, basically, we get to the end of the changes that were enacted in 2017? So we're not reforming, we're just deciding to continue what we reformed in 2017?
By design.
By design. And it's by design because of the significant budget impact. It was trillions in 2017, and so you couldn't go longer because you'd have to offset those?
There are always going to be revenue constraints. There are questions about how you actually pay for it or if you pay for it. For example, Senator Crepo would say that because this is current law, then this is the baseline, and it doesn't actually cost anything else to continue current law. Not everyone agrees with that. The reason it's by design is because the corporate tax cuts in TCJA were made permanent. The individual tax cuts were not. I don't know how many people would agree with this publicly, but you would assume that neither, you know, a very progressive Democrat nor a very conservative Republican in Congress would want to have to go home to their individual constituents and explain to them why they allowed their tax rates to increase, particularly as we're fighting back inflationary concerns.
Gotcha. And so separate from, conceptually, you mentioned a renewing the tax reform would, an estimated impact of $4 trillion?
4.7, because there are tax raisers, things that raise revenue in that provision, and then there are also substantial tax cuts.
And unless we run deficits, that would be less funding for government outflow and services?
It would actually raise more, the impact would actually be a greater hit to taxpayers as opposed to the revenue that it raises for the government. So it's not necessarily about how much the government is taking in, it's more about the impact to individual taxpayers. There are also some nuances, like for family-owned businesses, for example, if you're a pass-through, there's a deduction that helps a lot of family-owned businesses. There are, there's a lower rate on estate taxes if you're trying to pass down businesses, et cetera. All of those benefits would expire.
Thank you for explaining that for everyone. And then, last time they did some tax reform stuff, it may not have been the 2017, if I remember right, they actually waited until the end of the tax year to get it done, just before you have to file, like, the next year. Is that possible? Are we likely to see that again for this?
So what will happen is reconciliation is used based off of a budget. It's possible, short answer, it's possible. Reconciliation is based off of a budget resolution. You can have one budget resolution per fiscal year. So right now, we're in FY 2025, we can have, that's why there's a two-bill strategy. You can have one budget reconciliation between You can have one budget reconciliation between now and September 31st to do one bill, and then you could have a second bite at the apple between September 31st and the end of the year when the taxes hit. Politically, though, I think it would be a lot, it would be very challenging for Republicans to have to go home in August, during August recess, having not addressed this issue. Congress is very reactionary, and a lot of times, you do wait until the very end to put pressure, but these, this impact is so high, I don't see them waiting and running out the clock on this, especially if you've got competing issues around government spending.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Sister Bison, Sister Street.
Thank you.
These people don't see us Bisons a lot down in this area, so if we're looking at you strange and, you know, it's a real Bison right there.
I see you.
That's what's going on. We thank you for coming in these parts, and I want you to know that the FAMU van is real. That's real what you saw.
I believe it.
But they don't have our ooh-la-la dancers. They don't have the ooh-la-la dancers. So, trust and believe, Commissioners, until you see Howard University's ooh-la-la dancers. FAMU can't touch that at all. Would an idiot request, this time, even an idiot elected as a county commissioner, make request of the federal government for its properties inside of Leon County, especially looking at the transactional approach to acquisition, expansion, imperialism of the United States? And this administration was in power before this potential, if you say, idiot commissioner noted the President's desire to unload federal lands, you know, unload, unload. We have massive issues, and though we're not going outside of the continental United States, we just want inside of our geographic bound to have control of a more federal land. I'll just leave this alone if you think that it's just dumb to try and secure the lands inside of Leon County. Sister Bison, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I would never call a commissioner of this esteemed body an idiot, so that we'll start there. No, I actually think that historically, Republican administrations have been more amenable to relinquishing federal land to state and local governments. It is a part of this whole overarching concept of reducing the role and the reach of the federal government. And so, I certainly think that under this administration, particularly because that type of land transfer usually doesn't happen as a one-off. It's usually packaged together with a massive lands bill where everyone gets a little piece of the pie. And that's something that, for someone who wants to have, you know, to be able to tout bipartisanship and have both Republicans and Democrats, you know, standing behind him as he, as he signs that lands package into law, it could certainly be something of interest, particularly in an even-numbered year, and certainly an opportunity that this county could explore.
I'm pleased to hear those comments. Should, in its tentative, we, either of us attend NACO, I would love for Patton Boggs to allow the seeds of that idea in our pursuit of securing our federal government's relinquishment of its properties here in Leon County. And if we get Canada as the 51st state, I could support that. Speak no French. Greenland, I speak no Greenland. I speak no Panama.
Nor do I.
None of those things. I wanted to ask, what programs, in terms of spending, usually when a new administration comes in, we find they come in with new exciting programs and new monies hit the street. It seems that the opposite is occurring under this administration, that monies are being cut off. But my ask of you is, what are the new spending opportunities that are coming to DC at the end of the month? Point us in the directions of places and spaces where money remains, there's a trickle, and we might be able to get some?
I appreciate that question. I think that we can pull together a team of specialists that can actually identify a full list for you, but off the top of my head, I would look at funding streams that have traditionally been bipartisan. Because something that was very interesting to me was how quickly this administration pivoted once they started hearing from their own members, particularly in the Senate. I would be looking at things like anything related to infrastructure funding, highway funding, the farm bill, anything agriculture-related, certainly anything defense-related. Those are spaces that have traditionally been very bipartisan, but we can certainly look to find others, and I think NACO is a great opportunity to kind of see what other priorities other counties are putting forward and where we can kind of find some overlapping synergies.
Very good. My final question, Mr. Chairman. You've heard it said that Florida, which is in my district, Florida State is in my district, but the anti-DEI sentiment, there's a hell of a lot of concern about FAMU's future. There's a hell of a lot of concern about Howard and its funding future from the federal government. We have the number-one public HBCU in America in Leon County. We're very proud of it. It is as fascinating academically as it is musically. But I ask you, the health, the life, the vitality of our HBCUs, specifically the one here in Leon County in District 1, but even wider, the other HBCUs and mostly in the southeastern United States, what is, what is your, your view of their health and well-being, in particular juxtapose against the anti-DEI sentiment?
These are challenging times, but HBCUs have long-held bipartisan support. There's an HBCU caucus in Congress that is helmed by a Republican and a Democrat. There are a lot of HBCUs in Republican districts, and seeing funding pulled from those, from those institutions harm them just as much as any other county. I think that a lot of the backlash around DEI, quite frankly, is in response to 2020. You know, every action has an equal and opposite reaction. So, there are a lot of initiatives that were spurred by 2020, the summer of George Floyd, et cetera, and I think a lot of the DEI pushback is related to that, as opposed to institutions, organizations, initiatives that have a long-held standing, particularly the establishment of historically black colleges and universities. So, while overarching, certainly DEI is, you know, the attack on DEI is not going away, I think that HBCUs are held in a different light.
Thank you. Finally, going back to my question previous, we would appreciate if your company is able to amass that list of pools of money that continue to exist, that have not evaporated, are on pause. I heard you say that defense spending is one of those bipartisan, but we're not a, we're not Walton County or Scambia, we don't have a base here. But we would love to know those areas which would make more profitable our time if we come to Washington at the end of the month of NACO.
Absolutely. And I would just say, I would think of defense more broadly, not just in terms of physical structure, but also investment in tech and innovation. So, to the extent there are opportunities there, certainly with universities, that's something to consider.
In that sense, I'll make this plug, you know, I know our board is a list, our ROTC building at FAMU looks like hell, and we have about 25, 27 old air-conditioned units, you know, in the Howard Hall, let's call. And it's been funded with, I believe, $13 million from the legislature last year, but $13 million barely pays the technical stuff, the kinds of computers that the military, they're not dealing with Best Buy stuff. That's a different grade and brand, it's very expensive. And I would be curious, in terms of the continuing monies that pour in the military, that you look at the track record of FAMU, the number of Colonels, Generals, Major Vandem Jones was here, he spoke to us today, Majors, those kind of folk, ounce for ounce and pound for pound, measure for measure. US Army gets a hell of a lot, bang for the dollar. And I would ask, Ms. Street, your interest in our ROTC funding. We need a new complex that brings Navy, Army, and all of them into a central, something like that. So, we've appreciated your presence here, and you've represented the Mecca quite well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm happy to work with you on that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here. We appreciate your thorough analysis of all the executive orders, and I appreciate your presentation to us, to us this afternoon here. But I want to just ask you a couple of questions. We know one of the things that, well, let me back up. About four or five years ago, we were all across the country suffering from the devastation of COVID. Businesses closed. As a result, individuals lost their jobs, created more homelessness, people, mortgages, were foreclosed, bankruptcies and what have you. But in the midst of that, we had what ARCA, the American Recovery Protection Act, and some federal funding came down to the local levels to assist and to try to jump-start the economy. Needless to say, our local governments suffered, you know, just like our business community and individuals. So, we had some federal assistance that came down, and I think, thank God, here in Leon County, we, you know, we recovered for the most part, we're on the upstream now, as far as having a very thriving economy. But right now, with the tariff wars with the President, the tariff wars with the President, and I think we hear, we've heard in the last couple of days, say, if they put a 25% tariff on our goods, we're going to do the same thing, you know, back and forth, and the potential is, from a reality standpoint, is higher, you know, higher prices. We haven't seen a reduction in prices, goods, our services in the grocery store. I think everybody's looking at the price of eggs, but I think overall, if we have the tariff wars, understand even the cost for manufacturing, the cost for parts to even repair our automobiles, all of that's going to go up, which in the final analysis should, might very well be inflation at an all-time high, businesses closing, people losing their jobs from an individual standpoint. So, I said all that to say this, is there anything, any rumblings that you hear, and I know this might be premature, but if we get into an economic situation like that, and especially from the local government's standpoint, do you foresee any type rescue similar to what we experienced with COVID, when we had our local economies, even on the state and the local levels, suffering from an economic standpoint, from the financial devastation? And I think clearly here, from a county standpoint, sitting as Commissioners, we would be concerned if our local economy, you know, fell into disarray because of, you know, what's happening on the national, international level as far as tariff wars are concerned. If you see any foresight from Congress to provide some type of overall assistance like we experienced with COVID?
I appreciate that question, and I think most folks sincerely hope it doesn't come to that, in terms of the devastation that we saw under COVID-19. I do think that we can never underestimate the need for bipartisanship to get things done in Congress. There is a scenario where even related to tax reform, Democrats have to be called on because Republicans are unable to move forward in their own party with their own votes. And if and when that happens, and it will happen particularly on government funding, there's several members of the Republican Party in the House who have never and will never vote for a government spending bill. They will need Democratic support, and Democrats will have their priorities. And you, I would guarantee you, if we see the economic impact of tariff and trade wars, if we see inflationary pressures and ultimately the kind of kitchen table costs are not being resolved, Democrats will have the same vested interest as Republicans in coming together to put forward at least narrowly tailored economic policies that try to relieve some pressure on all levels, whether it's providing state assistance, local government assistance, and certainly individual assistance. It likely will not be to the level of the CARES Act and, you know, the American Recovery Rescue Plan, but there are certainly certain provisions that you could see coming up again, maybe more temporarily, maybe, you know, a shorter term, maybe kind of a narrower qualification, but it's certainly possible.
Okay, thank you for that, for that response. Just one brief follow-up, Mr. Chair. Because what we are dealing with now is executive orders from the President as opposed to congressional, you know, congressional action, and I know that there are some Attorney Generals that have, 30, 35, 40, have filed lawsuits, several lawsuits, against some of the impending executive orders. But from a local standpoint, as far as we are concerned here, I know we have our state delegation, we have you guys, but is there, is there anything you can tell us as far as, our hands pretty much being tied, sitting back, just waiting to see what happens? Is there anything proactive you can advise us or recommend, just based on your 15, 17 years on the federal level?
Certainly. Yeah, I would never advise you to sit back and wait. I think there's always something that can be done, even if it is perhaps not legislative action or litigation, if there's no standing, but perhaps political pressure, you know, identifying the impacts of the trade wars on your constituents and help to lift up those realities. Certainly partnering with other similarly situated counties who understand how this is playing out and impacting their communities as well, particularly if it's, if it can be done in a bipartisan way. And, you know, presidential elections are four years, but we can never forget the midterms. A lot of people are thinking in two-year increments instead of four. There's certainly a possibility that this, that Washington DC looks very different with a potential Speaker Jeffries in the House in 2027, and I would be laying the groundwork towards that potential outcome and identifying what are their priorities, what is the equal and opposite reaction to this administration, such that you can be held harmless.
Thank you. Thank you for that response. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Proctor, you want one bite at it?
Yes, sir. That was an excellent, excellent response by Ms. Street to your question. Commissioner Cummings, an exquisite. your question. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, uh, an exquisite, uh, answer. Um, one of the things about these executive orders is that the legislative process, uh, Congress is out, the, um, the legislature, the Congress doesn't deliberate. In the conversation of public policy, it only moves forward from the stroke of the president's pen. And the only deliberation of the policy is with the courts. So, all of America is excluded from the conversation, whether it goes forward, uh, it doesn't. But the only people in the conversation is a court, and you gotta take the, 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 uh, executive order to a court. And the court's posture is that we don't legislate. I mean, we don't, we're not a legislator. We just decide the issues of law and, you know, we adjudicate. We don't legislate. And that's a problem because if there is no issue of law, you know, besides preemption, usurpation, um, you know, overreach, uh, and they're deciding weak questions, but not the substantive things with which, uh, democracy has policy that is deliberated, whether you use the dominant party, it's Republican, whoever, but our policymaking includes deliberation. And when you exclude that deliberative process and that kind of, um, bread making in, in the bowl and stirring it up and the way we do things, um, it's gonna be a shell, S-H-E-L-L, and very hollow because the court is not in the business of deliberating and duking it out and back and forth, uh, the way we anticipate. And if the president was, was getting legislation proposed, it would get that deliberative treatment. Uh, it would go through the halls of the House and the Senate. It would get, you know, and we respect, we would just accept and respect the outcome because it's gone through that. But by fiat, an executive order without any input from America's elected representatives of fifty states, um, is a, is a, is a constitutional crisis. Uh, it, um, it, um, stagnates democracy and it certainly is out of character with the scope and the substantive nature of the, uh, policy directives. Uh, they are so substantial that it almost, uh, shouldn't be, uh, a executive order, but the, the scope of these things, elimination of the Department of Education, uh, elimination of FEMA, uh, many of these things you've shown us today, uh, just warrant by the sheer nature of the size of the impact on America's people to be in a, um, you know, but you've given us hope, um, that last answer. And that is that these days won't last. I think we have about four hundred and five weeks. Uh, Monday begins, there are four hundred and five weeks left. And, um, but to build toward, uh, the changing of the guard in, uh, what year you said? When we, what's the next, after four hundred weeks, whenever that is?
Midterms. Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, midterms and when, uh, four years pass, we build toward that. So, that, that's encouraging. And this has been the nature of the seesaw of, uh, democratic society. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'm very, very, um, typically, uh, Patton Balk sends down to us, uh, two members, uh, three. Uh, but when you have a bison on the case, you only need one.
Bison are exponentially better. Um, all right. Seeing no further question, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox, there you are. Go ahead.
I'll be quick. Uh, you've, you've done an excellent job today. Um, your representation of your firm has been outstanding.
Thank you.
The presentation you had, the questions, and the way you've answered our questions, and even, uh, the perspective that you've given us on, uh, the, how the pendulum swings back and forth has been one that, that gives us a good indication of what's going on in Washington and what we can expect. My question to you is more of a, uh, because it seems like you've been there for a while and you may have perspective on this. Uh, it's more, I guess, academia than it is political, uh, historic, uh, with a historic reference. Do you, do you see, uh, cause I do agree. I think as a nation, we watch the pendulum swing from one, from one side to the other. I was, Billy, if you remember back in 2010 when I was elected, uh, the Tea Party was the thing. Uh, and then after the Tea Party thing happened, then it was a far, a far-left movement. Um, and then it was, you know, when it was there, now we're in the Trump era. Uh, do you ever think that we, we, we'll foresee a, uh, a time when the pendulum doesn't swing so far? Uh, cause it seems to me where those days, those days where, um, centrists or, um, bipartisanship was, was, was the norm are far gone. I, I remember, I was a child then, but the, the conversations between, um, Reagan and his Democratic counterpart of power, I forget who it was, Tip O'Neill, and how they would fight on the floor, would be able to have drinks after. Those times just don't exist anymore.
Not as much.
Um, you're up in Washington. Do you, is it getting any better in that way? Cause I, 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 I happen to believe that the problem that we have as a nation is not as much, I mean, po- policy and the people we elect, elections matter. Uh, but I think it's the cor- it's the decorum that happens amongst, uh, the parties and the people who are elected that's the biggest problem that we got. The fact that you can't sit down at a table and negotiate, and it's gotta be my way and not yours. There is no negotiation. Um, do you see that art form coming back to, to politics?
Yes, because I'm hopeful. I, I try to always remain hopeful. Um, and, and kind of two, two things in response. I think Commissioner Proctor touched on kind of this overarching, um, frustration around, you know, executive fiat. And that is shared quietly by a lot of Republicans in Congress. If, if for no other reason than that they want the opportunity to cast the vote in, in favor of the very thing that they are, are railing against the administration doing. Um, there is certainly a potential for this administration in this time to overplay their hand and go too far. Um, some can, I don't wanna be too political, but, you know, some can say that, uh, you know, the, the Democratic Party last, you know, before, leading up to the election went too far the other way and, and, and this is what we end up with. But, um, it doesn't end up being on the news every night, um, but there is a lot of bipartisanship that actually happens in Congress. Uh, it was a wonderful thing when we got past COVID and we could get back to congressional codexes because they are required to be bipartisan. Um, and so you have members of Congress going all over the world, um, you know, learning about other countries and, and traveling together and, and getting to know each other personally. Um, and you also have the requirement to fund the government, which is often done in a bipartisan way. Um, there are a lot of things that we are doing in a bipartisan way. It's just not sexy enough to end up on the nightly news. And I think that this pendulum swinging has created more and more and more moderates up and down the spectrum in both parties, uh, who are looking to get together, um, and, and not stay in the extremes.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
One thing I could, I can say about our staff throughout the years is that they've, while we've come up with all kinds of ideas up here, uh, great ideas of things we can do in the county, uh, and sometimes in the city, even though we don't have jurisdiction over the city, staff oftentimes will be the, I'll call it the adult in the room.
Mm-hmm.
That, that does the research, comes back to us with the, with what the facts are and what the unintended consequences of some of the ideas that we may have are and how that may lo- affect us long-term. Uh, because most of us are here a term or two, uh, some are here three, four, and those others are here, you know, as long as they wanna be. Um, but we try to make the most impact and the most change in the time that we're here. Staff oftentimes have seen those ideas time and time again and have watched them not work or has, um, watched them work or, or, or analyzed those same ideas over and over again because one thing I figured out in politics, there's nothing original. Everybody's had that idea before. Everybody's thought to try it and you, you're not coming to table anything new. Uh, I, I, I say all that to, to get to this question. Some of the things that I see thus far coming down from the federal government, and I'm no, I'm no policy head, but it strikes me as, as irresponsible, um, and not really considering the long-term effects of the policies or executive orders that could put in, be put in place. How much? We as a board tend to listen to our staff. And if we, if we don't listen to our staff, we push back with questions, ask for justifications, um, and most times we end up in a place of being reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Um, how much is staff at the federal level analyzing and also having input into some of these executive orders and, and policies that's being written, or is it just like, you know, this?
I think that...
You have the right to remain.
I think that there, there are, are two different sides to that, that question. One is the staff of the administration versus staff in Congress.
Right.
I think this administration in its second term has been very diligent about surrounding itself with loyalists.
Okay.
Who put forward an agenda that matches that of the president. Um, so I, 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 I don't know, you know, the, the staff of the White House personally. We don't, you know, we don't, uh, have brunch or anything together, but, but from what I've heard from folks who have worked in the administration and are closely related, they have certainly seen a shift towards greater loyalty. Um, so I think the, the, um, the adult in the room for the administration is, quite frankly, the American people, uh, who have a voice of their own through their, their representation, the, the right to redress Congress, and certainly through their, their members of Congress. As it relates to Congress, not all congressional offices are created equal, but I will say there are committees that have jurisdiction over every piece of legislation that moves forward. And very rarely do you see a piece of legislation move without having gone through a committee that is staffed with experts on the House, or, or, on the Republican, it, it's not even considered Republican or Democratic, it's majority or minority.
Right.
And, and those are career folks who have been there twenty, thirty years. They know what they're talking about. And certainly, um, committee staff as well as congressional leadership look to, um, uh, they, they look to them for, for guidance because, you know, we talked about the tax reform. Most of the members of Congress who are on the Tax Writing Committee in the House were not there in 2017.
Hmm.
So, they, they're not only, uh, uh, you know, don't have a, a precedent to follow. They don't, a lot of them don't even know the issues, uh, well enough to, to have a conversation about it. And there's a lot of education happening, and that is happening from the staff. So, so, um, yes and no is the short answer.
Mr. Chair, final comment. I will say, uh, thank you for those answers. Um, one word that you said is you have a lot of loyalties, right? And, um, that can be a problem sometimes, especially when we need to be checked. And I'll, I'll, I'll just speak on our staff here. I wanna, Mr. Administrator, you and your, your staff alone, Madam Attorney, those times that we may need to be checked, I appreciate the fact that you do it, uh, that we don't quote-unquote "have a lot of loyalties" because I think that, that creates problems and unintended consequences that we don't wanna deal with. And so, um, that's not anything that you can do anything about, but it gives, it gives me perspective into what's going on there and what to expect in, in, in the, uh, four years that, that, that we're looking at. But I do think midterms are, are so important. Uh, the key thing to remember here for anybody that's watching is that elections have consequences, um, and, and dire consequences. And we should all be, be excited about the opportunity to, to participate in the process of, of choosing our representatives so as that, um, we cannot, so we can, we can avoid some of the things that we're dealing with right now. So, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. All right. Um, we've got a motion by Commissioner Maddox. I think it was seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Is that right? I'm not sure. Okay. Uh, for staff recommendation on item thirteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you, uh, making it down to Tallahassee. Go Bison. Um, Mr. Administrator, we're on citizens to be heard on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got two speakers. Alan Ballas to be followed by Kenneth White.
Mr. Ballas, your name and address for the record, please. And I remind you, we don't have a back and forth. You just tell us what you need to tell us and then we can ask staff to work with you or whatever.
Alan Ballas, 6323 Thomas Drive, Unit 603 Panama City Beach, Florida.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
I'm here at the request and after my discussion with the Honorable Bill Proctor, I need to just take a second of my valuable time to tell him thank you. I called two different commissioners. Only one of them responded. Commissioner Proctor responded immediately, met me the next day and asked that I come and, and bring this to you. We have two issues going on. One is, both of them deal with the homeless in Tallahassee, um, off, off a crossway road, Crawfordville Road and Capital Circle. Um, there's, there's, it, it, I was taught in civics class that a break in transportation creates economy. Well, the homeless people are, are setting up where there's a break in transportation where they can beg. It's creating a safety hazard. I know that there's a lot of laws that conflict both ways, um, as far as freedom of speech and, and stuff such as that, but you can't even put a political sign on it right away and yet people are standing there begging for money. I am begging our commissioners to look at a proposal like they have in Seminole County that prohibits panhandling. This was, um, one of my neighbors and he posted a no trespass, uh, issued with the sheriff. It took them over a month and a half to go out there.
Excuse me, um, Mr. Chair. Can, can we put that on the overhead, Vince? Is that possible, that picture?
I've got, I've got a couple on the panhandle to you.
Is it possible that we can? Ms. Ballas, we wanna show it so that your efforts in taking those photos, everybody can see.
Mr. The commi- uh, Honorable Proctor was so afraid when we got by these properties, he wouldn't even get out to look, you know, to see.
Man, you ain't supposed to tell that.
Uh, i- i- it's the truth. My wife won't stay with me at my Tallahassee house because of, 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 of the fear of the homeless and, and the, uh, the crime that's going on there. I, I'm from Leon High. My father's got a brick that's out here in front of this courthouse, um, courthouse. Um, I'm the retired postmaster from Woodville. This is my home and I've got eight properties here. Um, it was disgusting. It is disgusting. This here, it's sideways, but this is where a homeless tapped into the power on the crossway shops. And I was told by, um, Detective Neely with this Leon County that, that there was no power hook-in. Uh, how do we go to the next? Okay, next. This, this is off of Crawfordville Highway, off of, um, uh, Capital Circle. This is Mr. Pryor's where there's a no trespassing warrant. It took them over a month to go out there and do anything about it. They moved them out, um, Wednesday and Commissioner Proctor went out with me Thursday. And, um, it, the cost to clean this is gonna be between thirty-five, it was, was all estimated between, uh, five thousand and twelve thousand to clean it up. Now, the property owner is paying for it to be cleaned up. We got a church group doing it for three thousand five hundred.
I'm a commissioner, not a sheriff. That's why I didn't go back in those, that area.
This is, this is the one off of Crossway Shops here where the sheriff has told me that they, um, can't do anything about it because it's on private property and they won't contact the, the property owner to let them know that this exists. And they said it'd be the same thing Detective Ron McMullin did as if they didn't like the color of my house. Um, you know, and I just, why don't we tell the owners that this is happening on their property instead of using code enforcement for law enforcement? This is that same property, so we can go to the next one. They, they, they removed the, the property from Mr. Pryor's, the one on Capital Circle on Wednesday. Six people moved back on on Saturday. This is a mattress that was on fire on Saturday. They keep doing fire after fire. I reported at the fire department repeatedly and it's, it's an issue. Um, I know I'm out of time, but, you know, there was two of us that were supposed to be there.
Ms. Ballas, your time is up. You've worked with Commissioner Proctor, um, and our staff is glad to work with you on trying to figure out what solutions are available to you.
I'm begging you to, to work on a proposal to stop pandering. Um, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Next speaker's Kenneth White.
That was my neighbor that had to leave.
He left.
Okay, so he's, all right. Thank you, sir.
That concludes your speakers, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Excuse me, Commissioners. Um, all right.
All right, Commissioner. I think Mr. Williams. Have y'all spoke? Y'all spoke already?
They spoke already, Commissioner Proctor. We're going to talk about that in Commissioner time. I think we're on discussion items, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator.
Just have one quick item. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to wish my much older twin brother, Commissioner Proctor, a happy birthday this coming weekend.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Proctor. And I wanted to give you a gift. It's kind of a visual gift in the spirit of the Marching 100. If you'll look at the overhead here, that's a young Shinkton Lamy head of the Civil Squad at Miami Central. And again, that's a visual gift for you, Commissioner Proctor, but I want to apologize to everyone else who had to see it.
Looks pretty good to me, Mr. Administrator. Looks like a guy with a lot of style. Yeah, that's me.
All right, Commissioners, we're on to discussion time. Yep, we had a great shot of young Shinkton out there solving problems, even back as a kid. So we're on discussion items. Commissioner Proctor, we'll start with you and work our way down the dais.
Mr. Chairman, a great place to start. Commissioners, I'm telling you, Commissioner Carolyn Cummins just opened up and stole the show. I've not seen an opening presentation. Her aide Chauncey said, "I bet you can't top that. You can't top that." I said, "I think we brought the boys choir pill one time, and they made a little noise." But I'll be working on something to top that opening, Commissioner. That was fabulous. They did give us a mini concert, and we're very proud of a famu band. Commissioners, my ask tonight is for review on the ordinance on solicitation, which Mr. Ballas has brought to my awareness. He tried to, what he did, drive me all around up in the woods and stuff I had never seen. It's worse than what the pictures suggest. What you saw was only visually. But you got no sense of smell of anything that we smell down there. It was scary. And no, I was not going back up to meet nobody. I remember going up under the bridges down in Miami with Governor Charles to go down to see some homeless people under the bridges. And I don't know why we had to go back there. It was just a smell that you just can't even describe. I'd like to see us do something about this condition. In terms of people begging on the streets of Crawfordville Road, Capital Circle, Madam County Attorney, do we have an ordinance that addresses solicitation? And what can we do to get people out of the median? The road is intimidating. It's a hazard. Sometimes people look as if they're not in good health. They could fall, they could fall in the front of somebody's car, and a driver needlessly has issues going on that they really shouldn't have encountered because they were not expecting people clown around, dance around, and all of that. Is there, where are we in terms of our posture of ordinances that address the issues of loitering on private property? The notices that are given to owners, and particularly when code enforcement is writing the owners if they live out of town and they are unaware? Where are we in some of the issues that were presented with Mr. Ballas and solicitation out of the median?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. You can go right ahead.
Thank you. So you may recall that the commission used to have a provision on the books, but it was problematic because while it prohibited certain activities on streets, there were exceptions. And under the case law, that's not permissible. So that was repealed. And then a couple of years ago, maybe three, two or three, time's a little fluid, the board was considering whether to adopt an ordinance regarding solicitation but pulled back, as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner Proctor, when Sheriff McNeil came and spoke, and then the board instead decided to fund host deputies. So the Board of County Commissioners currently has nothing on the books related to solicitation. You mentioned loitering, particularly on private property. Again, maybe this is a year, two, year and a half ago, the board adopted an ordinance that provides a mechanism for private property owners to post signage and for law enforcement to enforce loitering and trespass violations on private property. So there actually is something on the books for that already.
Okay, now, I know Commissioner Cavan, his issues with Pilsacola, but we're talking about standing in the road begging at the red light in the median. We don't have anything that's against standing in the middle of intersection?
Commissioner Proctor, Madam County Attorney, wasn't there case law recently at the Supreme Court or a ruling at the Supreme Court that dealt with this, or was that?
No, you're thinking of Grants Pass, it is with homelessness. That has nothing to do with solicitation or panhandling, as it's sometimes called. So that is not a change in law based on the recent U.S. Supreme Court decision. Happy to bring back an analysis. As you can see, using Grants Pass as a perfect example, case law and precedent can change. There are some limitations on what you can do to regulate solicitation and panhandling along roads. Happy to bring something back. The board would like that.
If we had something before, people like the firemen with the hat, the boots, the goody-goody organizations recognize 501(c)(3), I think that we had exemptions, waivers for them.
That's correct.
But what we, but what we have prohibited was scragglers, individuals, persons who are not with the fire department or goody-goody cause, cause and have it. And I'd like to see, I've seen that, it's been normalized in my mind. I've seen it so much, I'm desensitized. But the riot with Mr. Ballas and to see it through his frustration, his eyes, it does prick my awareness and consciousness. We need to do something. I know people standing in the north Walmart in your area. I know people standing over there where Sunnys, they cleared out the woods, but that other Walmart you got over there, Falls Chase over there. But we go around every, not in your district, Ms. Chairman, you don't have those issues.
Yes, we have some of those.
Okay. But I was exempt in your area. But the rest of us, we got some problems. And I think, Madam Attorney, I ask the board for permission for us to look at something that begins to modify.
Commissioner Proctor, let's hear from Commissioner, I got Minor, O'Keefe, and then Maddox. Okay, I think you're going to maybe find some commonality there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a question for our county attorney. Madam Attorney, didn't we, I thought we passed an ordinance after much debate prohibiting panhandling or any solicitation in the actual mediums for safety reasons? I thought we passed that about a year and a half ago.
We did.
No.
No, we put up signs.
No.
No, no, no. I could be wrong, but this is your wheelhouse. But I thought we actually did pass an ordinance that prohibited, for safety reasons, any solicitation of any type without specifying type, prohibiting solicitation in the mediums themselves for safety.
I was, I thought so too. That was my own point. Is there any kind of way that maybe we can, you can review that and send us exactly what we did do, Madam Attorney? Because we had this exact conversation, this exact conversation. And, yeah.
Yes, I'll be happy to look at it and bring back a status report to the board. It's my recollection that solicitation, public urination and defecation, and one other topic were all included in a proposed ordinance that, again, the board opted not to proceed with after Sheriff Walt McNeil came to the meeting and wanted to talk about other ways to address it. You may also be thinking of the efforts that staff made by putting up the signs, requesting that people not solicit, but that was not a mandate. It did not make anything illegal under our code. That was just an initiative of staff that the board approved. But again, I'll be happy with, after board direction, to bring something back to the board on this topic.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Keefe, I've got, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, ma'am. I thought the signs were in addition to what we, what Commissioner Maddox and I were believed to be, but we'll read the update. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think, well, we're going to hear from Commissioner O'Keefe and then whoever else wants to talk. But I do, I distinctly remember the ordinance that did not get any love because I motioned for it. It didn't get a second. And it would have handled this issue, and I think it was crafted in a way that would have made it legal. But at that time, we weren't interested. But, and I do feel like there was something else to the sign thing. Yeah, I think a status update from the county attorney would be best, but Commissioner O'Keefe, you're up next, bud.
Since this is comment time, if there's not going to be a motion, I'll just, won't comment. If there's going to be a motion.
No, the chairman stopped me to allow your comments before I made a motion.
Okay. Then I also remember something like that, but so an update on that would be the case. You know, we did also, we've had this conversation, and maybe we didn't go as far as, maybe we decided not to go as far as legally allowed, but I feel like I'm a broken record, but we are within certain limits of our authority based on case law. And on this, you know, I've also, I've actually been out and spent a good bit of time in those camps. I don't hang out there, but going out and outreach and visiting and talking to people and talking with the host deputies of the sheriff's office and seeing what's working. And I will say, progress is slow, but they are, their one-on-one relationships are moving things along. They are getting people bus passes to where their family is. They are doing all these things that a lot of us had talked about wanting to do that I didn't, you know, initially think is a good idea. So I don't want to undermine their efforts or acknowledge, not acknowledge their efforts. And then we do have an ordinance for private property that we created where all a private property owner has to do is put up a sign that we have an example of in our agenda meeting from that last year. And then a law enforcement officer can trespass somebody without written, if they don't have a written approval, and there's that sign on the wall, they don't even have to call the owner. Is that right? They can just trespass them based on there being a sign?
That was commercial posting.
It was on private property.
Well, these are, this is not a commercial situation. This is land that's not private, but we were speaking specifically to commercial settings and putting in their lenders. I'm just distinguishing.
Madam County Attorney?
Yes, so again, this is all dealing with private property. The board did adopt that ordinance. It did not address any sort of solicitation on public property or rights of way. And I just did a quick look at our municipal code. We have no current ordinance related to solicitation on public property at all.
Okay. Commissioner, I think Maddox has some comment, then we'll come back to you. Commissioner Proctor, you can finish up.
No, we're still on me.
Oh, you're still on me? Okay, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Then I just wanted to emphasize that, and if the board's wills to come back and consider a ordinance that is specific, then, you know, we'll take that up when we do. I will say, the, so a private property owner can put up the sign and can, if they wish to, have people, you know, eject it, if you will. And as far as asking law enforcement if they're not willing to contact the private property owner, that's all public information. There's no reason anyone else can't contact a private property owner who does not seem interested in dealing with people on their private property. And that seems like something that can totally be done currently, and if that owner wants law enforcement to get involved, they can. And then I also just would hope that we, as far as criminal or civil enforcement, if our law enforcement agencies are recommending a course of action on what they enforce or what they do, I think having their input on any changes would be good.
Okay, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. Ms. Chair, if I might on direct, on point.
We got to keep a little bit of order, Commissioner Proctor. Let me do Commissioner Maddox, then we'll come back to you, and you can comment on Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Minor and anybody else, and you can carry on with your time.
I just, Mr. Chair, thank you. We had, you brought it up, Mr. Chair. We had a conversation just like this.
Three years ago.
Three years ago, and we had folks who came in here and spoke about specifically, what about organizations like you talked about, the firemen or children who want to solicit on the side of the road. And I believe, Madam Attorney, if I'm, and this is three years ago, so, but one of the things that we talked about was, I think, even discrimination of some sort because of, you know, being able to pick.
It's First Amendment, and you can't pick and choose and exclude certain
Right.
speech, but allow other speech in certain public areas. That's a problem.
Exactly. But then I do remember that we did get into a conversation about the safety issue of people being in the median. And I think, I don't know if we went as far as saying, as prohibiting the median, but for some reason, I feel like there was something that we talked about to where it should have been prohibited in the median from a safety perspective. That's why I was asking, that maybe we could get the information come back first because I'm not really interested in having that conversation again and having the folks that we had last time if we don't have to. Now, if the information comes back and it says that we didn't address that median piece, then maybe we need to have a conversation about it. But Commissioner Proctor, what I'm wondering is, you know, can we get a status report back? Or maybe even, rather than an agenda item or status report, you know, analysis of what we did there policy-wise from the county attorney? And if it doesn't speak to these pieces that we're talking about, then we bring it back at the next meeting. Because if we've already addressed it, then, you know, maybe we should let it sit where it is. Now, Madam Attorney, on the median piece of it, we could create, we could create an ordinance that prohibited solicitation in the median for anyone soliciting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what case law, and I haven't looked at this since the last time it came to the board, which is why if it's board direction, I'd be happy to take another look because, again, case law evolves, you know, as we've seen on different issues. But the last time I looked, banning certain solicitation or other activities in your roadway cannot be a pretext for trying to prohibit panhandling.
That's what it was.
So if you're going to say it's for safety, you need to have data and other things to support it so that when you are sued, you can defend it legally and the judge doesn't determine that the whole point of your ordinance wasn't a ruse to prohibit panhandling.
Ma'am Attorney, Ms. Chair, that, now it's jogging my memory because you said the exact same thing during the item. Commissioner Proctor, if we could, if Madam Attorney could send us some information about what we did do, and then what it would take for us to get to that median piece before we go down that road, I would like for us to do that, rather than have an agenda item or even a status report and have the chambers packed out with folks speaking against it. Like, because, I mean, we had a lot of people come last time, and we, it did bring about a good conversation. I just want to know before we go down that road what we can, can't do, and what we did last time.
Well. Commissioner Cummings, hold on one second. Let's let Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor hadn't even told us what he wants to do yet, guys. Go ahead, and you got it back.
I wanted to make a motion to, that we look at ordinance prohibiting panhandling from the median, middle of the street. I disagree with the county attorney's assessment, and I don't think a court would hold us suspect as suppressing First Amendment rights because we're trying to keep people out of the median asking for money. And what we wanted to prohibit very narrowly is folks standing up soliciting money in the middle of the street. That's not the same as Rick Minor and O'Keefe standing up there, "Vote for me" and all like that. They got that free speech on the side and honk if you love me. Those people in front of the Capitol, what they do. But standing in front of the median, again, asking for money, such as the
But standing in front of the median and getting, asking for money, such is the nature of folk who, they're dangerous, you know, and they, they place a chilling effect. Hell, I will run through a red light not to stop at certain points. And I don't think a court in Leon County would have a problem with us understanding is a lot of folk run red lights so they don't have to be stopped and harassed at the median. So I'm trying to, I like to make the motion that we bring back an ordinance to prohibit solicitation in medians in Leon County.
We have a motion from Commissioner Proctor. Second, we're in discussion. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We came to this discussion because, if it's my understanding, because of the presentation and the pictures and the vagrancy on property. I'm not sure if the motion addresses that. Maybe, maybe it does, but I do remember this coming up before. I remember the county attorney giving us case law that says there's a First Amendment right in certain areas, on sidewalks, what have you. Bringing an item back, dealing with the median, does that have a far, would that have a far-reaching effect, Madam County Attorney, to address the issue that the speaker brought to us today about individuals just vandalizing personal property? I don't see how it would, two of the same.
I, I can't speak for the speaker. I think the speaker was trying to correlate places where people are camping with areas near where they are soliciting. Again, don't know if that's the case, but, but the analysis would not address that because whether, where they are residing would have absolutely nothing to do with the legality of whether this board can adopt legally an ordinance to prohibit panhandling in a median.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Now, Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask Commissioner Proctor then? It's his motion, I mean, I'll, I'll support the motion, but are we trying to address what you said you went out and visually saw with your eyes? Are we trying to address that through bringing back an ordinance of, of the one that you mentioned? Is, is that your goal?
Absolutely. It's very narrow, just prohibit people standing in the road. Got nothing to do with where you slept last night, night before. Just don't stand in the road begging.
Oh, I see.
For money.
I'll support the motion. I was just trying to get clarification.
Commissioner Caban?
Thank you.
For discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of following and listening to the conversation. I understand what the, the county attorney's saying, and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Proctor. And I think, when you take a step back and look at what we're discussing, panhandling in a median, in my opinion, is a road safety concern and is a pedestrian safety concern. So I think if we're looking at the reason why we're looking at banning panhandling, if we're saying that it's because of, and that we have, you know, case law says it's permissible, Madam Attorney, correct me if I, if I, I was trying to follow what I think you were saying. Case law has to show that it's for road safety or pedestrian safety? Or was, was that, Mr. Chair?
Madam Attorney, yes. You can speak freely.
Thank you. So, so based on the case law that Nick and I reviewed about a year and a half ago, courts have expressed skepticism over just blanket assertions that it is a safety issue. So in other words, courts have required data, proof that there was a dangerous condition in the community resulting from this specific activity that required that that body adopt an ordinance to address a safety issue. So your personal belief that it's dangerous is not helpful in the legal context if your ordinance gets challenged. So you would need experts in this field to somehow quantify or demonstrate the hazard such that it would support safety as a basis for the regulation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that clarification. I think that's very helpful. I think, you know, what we've talked about as a board oftentimes, you know, we have data showing, you know, pedestrians being, you know, hit by vehicles. I'm sure we have, maybe if this does come back, if this passes along with the ordinance, we could have staff include data and, and points showing, you know, pedestrians being hit by vehicles to support this. But listen, I, I think this is a, a problem in Leon County. I know this is a problem in my district. Commissioner Maddox, you know, I, I was listening to where you were going about, like, having a status report come back. For me, I kind of like just having an ordinance. If we're gonna go with an ordinance, let's just bring it back to kind of speed the process up, and either we're gonna support it or not. That's kind of my viewpoint on it. But, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. I, I understand everybody's urgency to want to get this done, but I'm also listening to my attorney say that we need data that, that, that justifies what we're trying to do. And though we're trying to rush down this road, I mean, I'm, I'm as concerned as everybody else, and I'd like to see it happen, but why not take the time to see what it takes to actually make it happen? The status report I was asking for is an analysis of what we did last time and what it would actually take for us to implement what we're trying to do this time. So then, by way of looking at that, we can actually start to build whatever we have to build to create the ordinance and put it in place. Staff could come back with, Madam Attorney, Ms. Chair, if staff, let's say an analysis, staff does an analysis of those who were hit by cars or those who were injured by a car while, while soliciting, while soliciting in the median. Would that stand up to be enough proof for us to then approve that, that ordinance in the moment? I don't even know, what, what does that look like?
That is exactly the sort of data. Generalized pedestrian issues is not sufficient to specifically target solicitation in a median as data sufficient to support that type of regulation. You would have to correlate pedestrian incidences directly relating from panhandling or soliciting in a median to, to support legally such an ordinance. Generalized pedestrian safety is not sufficient. At least it wasn't under the case law from a year and a half ago. Maybe the case law has changed.
So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, we brought this forward one time, it failed. We're about to try to bring it forward again without actually having an understanding of what it takes to get there, and it may fail because we can't. It may fail because we got 75 people in, in the chambers that say we shouldn't. But what I would like to see is for us to have all the information on what it would take for it to make it, for us to make it happen, so then we can, we can actually vote for it if we want to vote for it and say that we're standing on good ground and we're not going to be challenged in court to say that it's going to go away, because I guarantee you this, there will be some group that will be here that will speak against it, that will say we will challenge this in court because you don't have enough proof, given the, the threshold that you have to satisfy to do this. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna make a substitute motion that a subs, a, a status report comes back with an analysis of what we did prior. Along in that, also in that status report, I would like for you, County, Madam County Attorney, to explain to us exactly what we would have to do to start to go down this road of creating this ordinance and it be legally permissible by, by law and analysis. So do we have to do a survey or whatever we have to do? What do we have to do in order to do that? Now, I've heard that there's other counties and cities that have, may have implemented this type of thing, but my guess is that they probably went down the road of doing everything that they needed to do to, to, to be able to enforce it before they actually brought it forward. So that would be my substitute motion, that we start to really look at how do we begin to implement it along with the analysis of what we did before. I do think there could be a small correlation there between, between spots where there, there is camps and also where panhandling is happening. So, you know, it's, it's a short walk from my camp to that corner where most of the people are, are given, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna camp out there. I, I believe that. I do believe there's a safety concern that we have to consider by which that Commissioner Caban and Commissioner Proctor are talking about. I just don't, I just don't know right now, as I'm sitting here, that if I want to vote for it, that, that it's gonna stand up. So that'd be my substitute motion. Ms. Chair?
I'll second that.
All right, so we've got a, a substitute motion for a status report to come back with information on what we've done previously, and seconded by Commissioner Minor. We're still in discussion. Mr. County Administrator, I saw you in the queue. Did you want to...
Nope.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, while Commissioner Maddox was talking, I did a, a quick search, and I, I think I found why we're conflating the two issues. We did talk extensively, and the county attorney led this discussion in terms of informing us what we could and cannot do. And, and we met during our briefing before that county commission meeting and talked at length about it, about needing that data, the safety data that shows the, the danger of people soliciting in medians. And we didn't have that data at, at our disposal, so we couldn't move forward at that time. And we didn't know that we could collect that data to make that case strong enough to have it with, with, stand up in court. What we did do at that meeting, this is February 21st, 2024, actually Arianna wrote the story in The Democrat, we did pass an ordinance prohibiting solicitation on private property when the private property owner had not, had given express permission for that solicitation to take place. And that was, because of our ordinance, that is now deemed, you know, an offense. So that was something that we did do as a result of those discussions. So I'm supporting Commissioner Maddox's substitute motion because I'd like to have a, a refresher on that, that same discussion we had a year ago with any update of the evolution of case law, which might put in a different context what we might want to go going forward. But I, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Proctor, with the motion. I, I mean, I think all of us are frustrated. I think the community has been frustrated with some of the, some of the solicitation that's out there, but I think this is the best approach, because maybe nothing has changed from a year, from just a year ago. And I'd hate to have us go through that whole discussion again with having, you know, 30 people come and speak to us when we come to the same conclusion from a year ago. So that's why I'm supporting the substitute motion. And I like to take a look at that, figure out what changes have taken place in the last year, if any, and then go from there. Thank you, Ma, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, it's back to you, then Commissioner, Vice Chair Caban after that.
Mr. Chairman, county attorney may remember, I can't, I can't, excuse me for not being able to remember, I believe it was the 1960s, and they were trying, Supreme Court, yes, Supreme Court was trying to define obscenity. Obscenity, what is obscene? And one of the justices has said, "I don't know, but I know it when I see it." And to the extent that that's an instinct or intuition, our job is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. And a part of what we do is intuitive, and we know danger when we see it. And looking at the median situation there, you all need to come down there and see it. You might know it if you saw it. I've seen it, and I think that you feel it in other instances. I just want to say to us that our job is to legislate, and if we legislate that our intentions have not been to affect First Amendment rights and all of that, I believe our county attorney would, or should represent our view of what is our legislative discretion and what we believe is in the interest of the health and safety and welfare of citizens of Leon County. And standing in the median begging up on money, there's no, and I'm not biased against people sleeping on the ground. I'm not against people sleeping on the ground. I am against people standing in the median, creating havoc for drivers, creating fear for drivers, and only go out in hoes, you know, if they, if I had money laying on the seat or had something on my dash that they saw, I don't know what would happen if somebody looked down and saw I had a $20 about to go into Zaxby's. Those are issues at a gut level, and we're living in an era where, I mean, we can't be soft, and this has been going on for three years, but honestly, I think Commissioner Welch brought us to the point to act. And truthfully, we were not soft. It was the sheriff who asked us to consider and to give a six-month, 10-month reprieve and allow him to try those, that social outreach method. We've not had a conversation to see if he's been effective, but to sit here and know that we're allowing dangerous situations, we can't wimp out like that. We, we're in a moment where people's, we, we're, we're acting in swift and critical times, Ms. Chairman. And I say to you that in the last two weeks, we've seen decisive and swift acts of the federal government and moving at the speed of sound in all kinds of directions. And we are sitting here crippling around, taking three years and can't come to whether or not it's dangerous in the median to be in the, you know, you gotta have guts to govern in, in, in this era. This is a new, new moment we're in, and I believe that we are certainly underacting when we know there's critical, critical need. And, but to Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Miners, their approach to wanting us to determine the information along the lines of county attorney, the problem there is how do you objectify and make concrete the notion of danger? What is it? How do you define it? You know, so it's, it's, she gives us a solution that does not have an objective, measurable application. You can't. So it's going nowhere, but we're kicking the ball down the street. This county attorney should respect what we said as legislators and then argue our position if someone wants to take us to court for trying to provide for the health and safety of our community. That's her job. Legislating is our job.
Hold on, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Caban, and then I'll come back to you, and then I've got a few things to say, and then we can vote on the substitute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Proctor, I will say that I don't think the, the county attorney is coming this from a position to try to prohibit us from going one, one way or the other. I appreciate your insight, Madam Attorney. I just think we interpret what she's saying and how we can go about it differently. I stand with you on this in regards to the fact that I think this is a road safety and life safety issue, right? I think anyone who drives on Pensacola Street, West Tennessee Street, or the North Monroe Corridor, pretty much at any time of day, will see that this is a life safety issue. What I would hate for us to do, and the reason why I am going to respect the vote, no substitute motion, is I agree with your position, Commissioner Proctor, but if tomorrow someone panhandling in the median steps in, steps in the right of way and gets hit by a vehicle, right? Well, we as policymakers had the decision to sit here and say, hey, we're gonna bring back an ordinance to prohibit that and give law enforcement the opportunity to stop that from happening. For me, I know that if we have the opportunity right now to bring back a, an ordinance for us to review, I, I want to give law enforcement all the tools that they have to be able to do their job, and sometimes that job is to actually protect folks in the medians and those who may not think they're breaking the law, but is dangerous, no different than a seatbelt law, right? There's state law to, you have to have your seatbelt buckled, right? Well, that gives law enforcement the tool for life safety. So that's, that's where I'm at, Commissioner Proctor, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Minor, and then I'm gonna say a few words, and then we'll vote on the substitute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listen, I think we've all seen this over the years. I know a lot of constituents have, because I hear about it, and I'm sure you all have too. I've taken pictures of people walking into the road during a, a red traffic light, panhandling, walking straight in the road. I've taken pictures of that because I'm concerned about it and trying to figure out what we can do about it. We've been talking about it before. I mean, I'm looking at an article from a year ago where we had the same discussion. So I, you know, to say that we need, we're being soft because we're not governing from our gut, I think is inaccurate. So I, I have no problem with people governing with their gut, but I also want us to govern with our head. And the county attorney has told us, as she did a year ago, that we need hard data to bolster... as she did a year ago, that we need hard data to bolster and support what we might do as an ordinance. I don't want us to have an ordinance where we go through with this and then we get sued, it costs tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars, where we're hauled into court and we're asked, why did you pass this ordinance? Well, we can't say, I was governing from my gut. I had a feeling in my gut, it's not safe. We know it's not safe. We know it's not safe. We don't have the data to back it up. I've not seen data to back it up yet. When we do, the county attorney will tell us whether or not we have a strong enough case to move forward with it. I'll be the first one to make the motion because I know in my gut, it's not safe. Unfortunately, though, we have to also govern with our head, and county attorney is telling us we don't have the data to back that up. So she's the attorney, I'm not. I'm going by what our county attorney, highly talented, highly capable, is telling us. So I know what you're saying. I'm frustrated, just like you are. I want to put a stop to it for the safety of the people that are walking in the road, jeopardizing their lives as well as drivers' lives. But we also have to govern with our head. And so that's why I'm supporting the substitute motion. I think it's the responsible thing for us to do. Let's remind ourselves of what we talked about a year ago, what discussion we had about the need for hard data to support an ordinance for this, and then we decide where we go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. I'll say just a few things, and then we'll vote on the substitute motion. I'm gonna be consistent in my position on this, which I have been for three years. I cannot support the substitute motion. I think that this is a imminent public safety threat, an issue, not just to drivers, but to the people in the road. I think that we have a significant problem here. We can say it's not statistically proven, but anecdotally, we've had pedestrians clipped by cars and killed who are in fact homeless. The director of Lively Technical School hit and killed somebody on Apple Yard Drive two years ago that was walking across the street at 4:00 in the morning. I think that, I appreciate Commissioner Maddox's attempt at being deliberate. I just feel like our county attorney, we know is a savvy, smart, and capable person. If we direct her to bring back an ordinance, she won't bring back an ordinance until it has been fine-tuned and heavily crafted. And if it is in fact, if she is incapable of producing an ordinance that would pass legal muster, she will come back to us and say, I could not draft an ordinance that passes legal muster. If she brings us back an ordinance whenever that, at some point in the future, we must assume that it, just like the one three years ago, will pass legal muster. And then in that, in that question, then we just have a decision to make. But we will see the ordinance, we will have time to debate it on the dais. It has to have multiple public hearings before it's adopted. So it's got a process involved, and I don't know a status report is gonna, all it does is prolong that process. If that ordinance looks anything like the one three years ago, which it probably will excluding some of the other elements, we've already seen it. And as case law has evolved, maybe her analysis will change. But I see that coming back in the draft ordinance the first time. And then if we have a robust debate, we can't do anything with it, then we move on from there. But I will support the original motion by Commissioner Proctor to bring it back.
Tell you what.
Commissioner Maddox.
I've listened to you guys speak, and I don't think you understand what I'm saying. It's not that I don't support it. The lady just said, my county attorney just said, you said that if she could come up with something that passed legal muster, she will, or she will tell us that she can't. She literally just said that she did not, and I could be putting words, this is why I interpreted it, that given the fact that we don't have the data that we need to pass an ordinance that could be defensible, that that's the reason that we didn't move forward before. And she said that, she gave that advice last time, that she don't have the data. She, you created an ordinance, but you don't have the data to make this ordinance legally enforceable. Now, if you had the data, if you took the time to get the data, then yes, we could put something together, and we could be like every other city, and then we can enforce it because we have data that can't be challenged. But I'm frustrated, I'm frustrated to the point that I'm trying to make sure that we can vote on something, that we can then, because I want, I want to vote for it too. I do. But I'm trying to make sure that we can vote on something that we can keep and enforce and give her all the tools she needs to enforce it. But all I'm hearing is that, well, you're just prolonging and kicking it down the road. No. If it comes, if you ask her to bring back the ordinance and it comes back, and we vote for it and it's legally indefensible, then it goes away, then we have to bring it back again. What's the, what's the, I rescind my motion. I rescind my motion, and I'll vote for the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of Commissioner Maddox rescinding his motion, I think it makes my comments moot.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I do want to say on point to Commissioner Maddox's comments. I sincerely understand where he's coming from with that. I just feel like if the county attorney brings back an ordinance that she says is patently unenforceable or unconstitutional, we just vote against it. I think we're directing her to go find the evidence and this data and all the things that y'all are talking about to justify an ordinance. We're directing her to do that. She's where I'm coming from on it. So, Commissioner Cummings, now you have the floor. And then Commissioner Minor, if you want to go after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we just sort of mince and, I guess, mix, mince and words, mix and words. Legally enforceable, withstand challenge. I think if we, if we pass an ordinance as suggested, regulating individuals from being in the median, being in the road, panhandling, or what have you, I don't think it's a matter of whether or not it's legally enforceable. I think the issue is whether or not it could be challenged. I think if we pass it as a commission, it is, it is a legal ordinance. Now, we can look at how likely is it that that ordinance would be challenged. And I think our primary concern here is the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. We know that it, that it's a challenge. We know that it's a major hazard. But whether or not it would be challenged is another, that's a step that would be taken after we pass the ordinance. Legally enforceable once we pass it, I believe it's legally enforceable. Whether or not we get to that step, we've got to pass it first. And so at this point, I would support, I guess, the motion that's on the floor because we know it's an issue, we know it's a problem, and I think it becomes a major, a bigger problem when we do nothing, when we, when we take no action to address the problem. And I think as elected officials, that's what we need to do, address protecting the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I would just add on point again, if the, if the county attorney comes back in an analysis and tells us it is completely indefensible and it will be challenged, that will impact whether I support the ordinance. We're not passing an ordinance right now. We're asking her to bring back some language that we can consider. And if it's on our agenda, I promise you, we still haven't heard from the sheriff, we haven't heard from TPD, we have, they're gonna come, and they're gonna tell us, we think this is a good idea, we think this is a bad idea. All of that will shape our judgment. This is not a presumption that we will pass an ordinance. It depends on the language we're asking her to write and create. And I trust that she will create something that is at least superficially on board for us to consider. But she may, her advice may be, don't adopt this ordinance, it's indefensible, right? So that's a consideration. We're just moving to that step. Commissioner Minor, can you close us out so we can vote on this?
I'll close out. So as a second to Commissioner Maddox's substitute motion, I would need to rescind that second. And the stubborn streak in me had me think for a moment I was gonna stick to my guns, but, but I'll rescind that second so that we're back to the original motion on the floor. Listen, the main difference between what Commissioner Maddox's motion was and Commissioner Proctor's motion was, was creating the ordinance, right? And having the ordinance come to us for review. Because we both, we all want the same thing, which is to reduce solicitation for safety reasons and all of that. So I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion, but I don't believe this is the best way for us to proceed. And I think Commissioner Maddox probably agrees with me. We had the same discussion a year ago, according to the news reports. I, I'm happy to see people come and speak to us, you know, it's just something that we do. But to have 20, 30 people come and talk to us about this, this ordinance again, to have the sheriff possibly come over here and take his time and talk, to speak to us again, I'm fine with all that. But we just had this discussion a while ago. I would prefer to have a status report come back and refresh our memory of exactly what happened and what the county attorney has said back then because I suspect that we'll review, we'll review this agenda, I don't know when it comes back, and go back to the same decision. I'm hoping that case law has evolved or that we have new data that allows us to be more, more, basically have some ordinance that allows us to get where we need to go. But I don't think that's happened, and I don't think the county attorney, I think the county attorney, if she knew of something, would say so. But I'll support the motion. I don't think it's the right way for us to go, but I think in the end result will be the same whether we have this motion or Commissioner Maddox's substitute motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ready to vote?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. We got Commissioner Proctor's motion and seconded by Commissioner Caban to have the county attorney bring back some language, draft language on an ordinance dealing with median panhandling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so passes 6-1 with Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox, you with it?
5-2.
5-2. Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner O'Keefe in opposition. Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, we're back to your commissioner time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask, is the blueprint meeting, was it canceled? Is it on for Thursday? What is the final?
Haven't heard.
You haven't either.
Is it? I haven't gotten that email.
Who knows? Anyone know?
Artie is here. Artie's, I think it's happened since we've been in a meeting.
I answered the email.
On a determination, I haven't had a chance to speak to her. She was gonna take into account all of the feedback she got that I'll convey to her from polling, polling you. So we'll be, I'll call her after this meeting, and we'll make the call, and I'll send out a notice as soon as I know. Thank you, Artie.
Very good. Thank you for that. Commissioners, I asked Mr. Williams and Mr. Hill to come forth earlier. You heard them about five hours ago. And they did a good job. I just don't remember what they said. Last year, we supported the Emancipation Day of the Hill family to tune about $7,000. In the milieu of celebrating our bicentennial, it was an exceptional year with which we gave thought to the meaning of the Hill family celebration, which has been paid for and lifted up for 138 continuous years. I asked this family their permission and something in the 200-year celebration, and I don't know, I think Kerry, Kerry Post, we had tagged this as one of the 200-year highlights, so some of the activities with which we celebrated in the 200th year, the Emancipation Day celebration. Quickly, I wanted to say, and I wanted to make sure that they were here to answer questions that you may have had. But I'd like for the county to adopt, and I've asked this family, would they lend to us a shared participatory platform that Leon County and the Hill family would host and co-host this event with us being financial supporters, but also with the recognition that for our support would have to be open, not just to their families and friends. But I think that this county, we owe it to history, we owe it to everything, that the legacy of a 138-year since 1887 celebration of emancipation. I also note, Commissioners, that in the tenuous moment of now, that I hope that celebrating the emancipation doesn't get outlawed, rule out of order, or something like that. I hope not. But while we have this opportunity and moment, I did not want to represent and say that this family is open to a partnership this year and going forward without this family being here to speak for themselves and make sure that I've not misrepresented y'all's willingness to share and open the ground to whomsoever, to the county and Hill's family celebration of emancipation. That's specifically an ask. And I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, for us to ask staff to bring back some, something responsible that would show our adding, our signage, our brand, and all of that to probably one of the oldest ongoing historical events in the county, I imagine. I can't think of anything older than 138 years other than church services that have gone on. So that's my motion.
Commissioner Proctor, can you, are you asking for an agenda item to come back with an analysis of a donation? Or, or, I'm a little unclear on what you're asking exactly. I don't know the dollar amount, or you're asking for the county to analyze a sponsorship?
No, no, no. I'm asking for something bigger.
The Hill, Henry Hill family.
I'm asking for.
Emancipation Day fish fry.
Emancipation celebration.
Right there on Centerville Road next to, oh, oh, I don't know. It's in May?
Yeah, May 20th. Yeah.
Can we maybe get an item come back and tell us?
That's what I'm asking, for an item to come back. The Hill family is sitting here for them to receive all of the county, being able to come out to an emancipation for what it means, what it means to the schoolchildren, what it means to the church, Sunday schoolchildren, and even adults who might prize our celebration with a family that has owned that property for Moses, I believe was a little boy.
Mr. Chair, I second the motion.
Okay. So staff, y'all clear on that? All right. We got a motion from Commissioner Proctor and a second from Commissioner Cummings to bring back an item about the Henry Hill Day, Emancipation Day Fish Fry. Any discussion?
Does y'all want to hear from Mr.?
Mr. Hill, would you like to say anything? I'm sorry.
I'd just like to ask on this motion, was there a dollar amount, or is that something staff is gonna get?
They can work with them.
Staff will do that.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Pass unanimously. Staff will get with specifics. Thank y'all.
Leon was completely left unfunded by the federal government or by the state of Florida. That's more than a rhetorical question. To approaching hurricane season, may or may not be there, have we thought our position if we had to go it alone? And I'd just like to tease that out and to ask our staff to begin to think about that with no specific, but if we had no federal dollars and they were frozen, as many federal dollars have been, they're in the hands of the court, not legislature. We don't know what dollars will come, what will not, but what happened if we lost all of our funding? I would love to see that contemplated in the, contemplated in the pending budget cycles and rehearsals. Commissioners, you heard today that from Sister, Sister Bison, Sister Street, that this is an excellent time for us to pursue federal land acquisition. I don't want Greenland nor Canada, but I do want us to own the land, which the federal government designates. And as they're off shopping for Gaza, I just want the dirt in Leon County. And I want to continue to say how important it is that with a governing team that we have in place, this is an optimal moment for us to get that dirt and to gather, lift that up. The J. Gaither Neighborhood Association, which Major Vanden Jones came before us today, Commissioner, I would just ask if your willingness to allow staff to attend that meeting on Monday at 2:00 PM at J. Gaither Park. Monday at 2:00 PM at J. Gaither Park. Attended a meeting on yesterday, there's going to be a part two on Monday, and unless there's some objection, I would ask if our staff could go for the listening. And with respect to the flooding of the J. Gaither Park, Lake Henrietta flows eastward into Little Silver Lake, and the ditch along Orange Avenue is coming, going westward around the back of the golf course and creating a mess. But we have two governments whose waters, okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. And then Commissioners, I'm requesting a town hall for Woodville community. Rachael, what, when is the time on that? Rachael? Okay. I'm asking for town hall for Woodville community, and I note that we have coming up on the 25th, the South Side Action Plan Workshop. But Commissioner Caban, I think we touched on this at the retreat, that we want to specifically ask our staff to present some of the updates, in particular along, what's the date on that?
Oh, okay.
All right. Rachael said we haven't gotten to the date, but it is to, for the format, for the idea of a, of a, what I just said. So Commissioner Caban, that's what we want to do in Woodville, and I'm asking staff support and participation.
So is that a motion in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Proctor, second, Commissioner Caban. Do you want to talk about it?
Quick, quick point. Commissioner Proctor, could, could I defer to the county commissioner for a second?
Sure.
Mr. Commissioner, I know we talked about this because I think originally at one point, Commissioner Proctor and I wanted to do like a joint public meeting in Woodville. What would be the procedure if, you know, I kind of wanted to, or we both kind of wanted to bring different presentations or items to discuss, like publicly? But what is that? Well, do we work, do we work with you individually? Like, how would that work?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it would sort of depend, generally speaking, when we've done these public, or, I'm sorry, I think it's a second issue.
Oh, Caban's second.
Okay. So generally speaking, when we've done these town halls, it's been a county event, a county, Leon County Town Hall meeting, and, but we would still, you know, advertise it that more than one commissioner may attend, and in which case, we would seek direction from commissioners to say, hey, we'd like the following things to be on the agenda, and then we would produce materials, have staff available. If this is a little bit different than, if this is a little different than that, we're very flexible there, too. If commissioners, again, sort of on their own, wanted to do this and you're asking for some staff support on that, then we would take that direction as well. So that, it would just be a matter of, if that's the direction that the board wants to authorize, then we would, we would, again, we would accept whatever direction it came from, from the board in terms of.
I'll defer to Commissioner Proctor since his motion. I just want, would like to have some input as far as, you know, the presentation and some of the dialogue, et cetera.
Absolutely. We want to make sure we have the imprimatur of the county itself and all of the bells and whistles that come with Leon County there to hear. Lingering some of it, we've heard before, you know, we've heard probably all of it before, but to make sure that we get a fresh wish list from the citizens in that area that they don't feel neglected from Leon County. So that's the motion.
All right, so we got a motion and a second for a town hall in Woodville. Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Vice Chair Caban, all those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. That's okay. Just, because I heard some discussion about a date. At this point, if it's a county event, obviously, we would work on establishing a date and we would notify offices and do all that coordination and, and again, reach out to you to make sure all your issues are addressed and the presentations that you're interested in, we'll follow up on that, too.
Rachael told me that was great.
Had a date to be determined.
All right. Thank you, Rachael.
All right. Back to you, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, the CRPTA will meet, can I get that overhead, please, on the CRPTA? Y'all meeting on the 18th, and I just wanted to, to ask staff if they can put that.
Matt, can you put the CR? Matt was zoning out.
I was talking to, we'll have to do a community meeting planning. So what was the?
CRTPA slide on the overhead?
We'll do it. I'll put it on the overhead.
I know that we have several of you representing us on the, and I noted that. This right here is the, is a proposal from the Florida Department of Transportation to create one-way pairings of South Adams Street that turns into Crawfordville and South Monroe Street that turns into Woodville Highway, and that actually has a dual, a pairing of streets. One is proposed by the citizens, and I think the one on the, which one is the one on the bottom, Matt?
Yep.
On the bottom? Okay. That's, that's Florida Department of Transportation continues to propose a, this circle, which is extremely dangerous, that is rejected soundly by the people when we had town hall years ago. And I'm asking CRPTA members for status and for, we've heard no communications in recent weeks, months about this, and I wanted to share and to say that with the activity occurring, the widening of the road southwest, this has never been dumber. It gets dumber every week. And can you put double on Matt, the other side? And the counterproposal idea coming from citizens, which I honestly can't, it does not, tram road does not come across the street and run into that building and all of that, but they keep it like that, that, that. I want to make sure CRPTA members that we get copies of this tomorrow. I want to make sure the county attorney is clear that on behalf of constituents using Woodville, constituents who are going down Crawfordville, that we're praying that FDOT does not impose a pairing of one-way streets there. And I will get copies, but I wanted to present it, to clear it in that the county attorney would know that I'm not trying to stack the debt for the CRPTA, just making sure the people voice was carried forward. And I thank you all for all that has been reported with respect to Crawfordville Road and all like that being high priority. And finally, happy birthday to my twin brother. Vince Long, we've been together a long time, but we got a long way to go. I thought you wanted the theme on those longs. And Vince, I thank you for the years in which you've afforded your friendship as well as your leadership to me and to our county, and I'm completely thrilled to be working alongside the world's greatest, I mean, the greatest county administrator in the world. And then my final, my final, final, Commissioner Maddox, is that I had the joy of being with Chairman Welch and immediate past Chairman Cummings on Friday before our legislative delegation and Commissioner Minor, and we had a strong house, we had a majority there over, we had a forum. And I did ask our delegation members, that you might know, I feel it's important to report, the sentiments of those present, all of those people, the absence of there being Ms. Kerry Post, you would be proud because Russell, Russell Dawes was there as well on the front row, but you would be proud as well to know my ask of our legislative delegation for a conference center for our community, for our universities, to be shared by our state governments, to be shared by our local governments, and that we all leave Tallahassee to go to conferences and go meet somewhere. We rarely invite people to Tallahassee to gather, to meet, to conference, to convention, because we have not a facility. And there was, there was, there was no disagreement, I believe, Mr. Chairman, in the House, that everyone understood that our state capital is the only one in the United States, and as we acquire Greenland and Canada and on and on, Gaza, we don't have a conference center. And I'm asking, independent of our board, I know you know what I'm talking about, but as the vice chairman of the Tourist Development Council, I ask for their consideration that our capital won't be the only one in the southeastern United States that don't have one. Happy Valentine's Day to each of you. Much love. I love you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Minor, I know you had wanted to, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cummings?
On point. For clarification, the motion was passed during Commissioner Proctor's time in reference to the town hall in Woodville, and it specifically mentioned Commissioner Caban and Commissioner Proctor. Well, I'm at large, Commissioner Maddox are at large.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not sure if that's exclusionary.
I think we just declared it a county-wide.
Okay. It was county?
It's a county-run, county-wide event.
It's, it's.
Put on by the county.
What? Oh, okay.
Yes, we can all know.
This probably noticed.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Minor, you had wanted to comment on CRTPA, and it's your time, so have at it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And Commissioner Proctor, I just put a reminder in my calendar for the CRTPA meeting to ask for an update and provide that update to yourself and the other county commissioners. So we'll get that on the, on the agenda.
I'm gonna give you that, that thing Matt got. We're gonna get some confirmation.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to start off with a motion to recognize Ms. Gigi Rellini for being selected as the next president of the National Association for Women Lawyers.
Thank you.
Gee, thank you. Gigi Rellini is a managing partner of Florida Government Law Partners, P L L C, here in Tallahassee. She's past president of the Florida Association of Women Lawyers, has been named one of Florida's top 50 women lawyers by Super Lawyers and one of the best lawyers in America for administrative and regulatory law. Tomorrow, she'll be installed as president of the National Association of Women Lawyers. In this role, she'll be taking the national stage as she and other members of the association tackle some of the country's most pressing issues related to law, justice, and civil rights. As you all know, we've got some incredible women leaders here in this community, and Gigi is an outstanding example of that. So very proud to be presenting a proclamation, well, after voting for the county commission, very proud that we'll be supporting her in that, in that new role.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for a proclamation for Gigi Rellini. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, everybody. Two weeks ago, Commissioner O'Keefe and I participated in the Point and Time Count, and that was an effort that's done every year by the Big Ben Continuum of Care, managed by them, but also has a whole host of community volunteers, as well as the three host deputies from the sheriff's office. Really good exercise, just going throughout the community, interviewing people that are on the street about why they're homeless, because we do that for two reasons. Number one, it helps us draw down federal dollars to assist them, and it also helps us understand why they're homeless, how long they've been homeless, and it helps us with that data to help us figure out how to address their needs. So a big shout out to John Coleman of the Big Ben C O C, Lovna, all the volunteers, the host deputies, and Commissioner O'Keefe. Next thing, I wanted to just compliment the Leon County libraries for having the Spring Seed Library kickoff on February 8th. I didn't go to that, but my wife and kids went, and they came back raving about it. Really good turnout. If you saw the pictures, you'll know what I'm talking about, but just an incredible thing that our libraries do. I mean, handing out seeds and, and training on how to take care of plants, and it's really just terrific. So shout out to Leon County Library Director Pamela Monroe and her whole team, and to everybody who came. Next thing, I wanted to, I wanted to thank our staff in a general sense. You know, sometimes we're up here for hours, and sometimes our comments can seem a little flippant, but I tell you, and I, I think I'm sure, I know all the, my colleagues feel the same way, we really do appreciate you. You're talented, you're, you do the job that you're required to do. When we disagree with you, we tell you, but we are very thankful for what you do. And, and I know sometimes you might hear comments from us that, that can be flippant, but, but we appreciate you. Don't go anywhere. We need you here, because if we didn't have you, we'd be in a whole mess of trouble. So I just, I just wanted to say that, and, and thank you for everything you do because you're appreciated. And then finally, I wanted to, again, thank Leon County, thank our staff and the commission here for the priority they put in recognizing and celebrating Black History Month. The program and the library and other ways, you know, recognizing and learning from history is important. It matters. It matters now more than it has in the past. So I just wanted to congratulate, or just want to thank all of us in Leon County government for recognizing something that is very important to Tallahassee, to Leon County and the nation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everyone for a good, long meeting. I wouldn't spend my Tuesdays with anyone else.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, first of all, want to just thank everyone, thank the, the staff and everyone that had a hand in welcoming and bringing the Marching 100 to our meeting today. So many people involved, Leon County Sheriff, the courthouse, bailiff units, I mean, it was just coordinated all in the direction of my chief of staff, Chauncey Haines, who is the best aide on planet Earth. He's not in, he's not in here. But the facility staff here at the courthouse, it was just so coordinated, the bus drivers from FAMU, Mr. Chairman, my fellow commissioners, for your patience and your indulgence with the ban today, and certainly Marching 100 ESPN ban of the year and Director Chapman. So it was just a great event, and I just, I think everybody enjoyed it, and I just thank all of you all for, for your, for your attention and accolades that you gave to the ban. I also want to ask for a resolution, move for a resolution to be presented for Women's History Month. Thank you.
All right. Proclamation or resolution?
I'm sorry, proclamation. Proclamation. Right.
So we got a motion for a proclamation, motion for proclamation for Women's History Month and a second from Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy birthday, maybe early, for our county administrator, Vince Long, and as well as our county commissioner, Bill Proctor. And I also want to ditto Commissioner Minor's shout out for our librarian, our librarian, Ms. Pamela Monroe, they just do a great job, but we had a great event at the library last Saturday, and if those of you might not know, is housing the Heisman Trophy of Charlie Ward, and he's a FSU grad, but he was the Heisman Trophy recipient some years ago, and it's on loan to our library from Thomasville Library. But it was a great, it was a great event, and I think you all saw some of the pictures up there. I also want to recognize one of our county employees, Alex McKinnon, who was awarded the Florida Emergency Preparedness Association Award. So he's one of our own, well, let's see, what do they call it? The Gary Arnold Emergency Management. Management Service Award. Yeah, I think that deserves a round of applause. We are proud of all of our county employees, like Commissioner Minor mentioned. And I mean, it's just two or three times a month, or sometimes more often than that, we have county employees that are awarded for their great service. And then we have sections of the county that are receiving awards for their service. And we just appreciate you all, and we commend you. This Saturday at the county library, we have the read-in for another way of commemorating Black History Month. Some of us will be reading some books to the children that will come to the library. So I just applaud again, Ms. Monroe and the county staff under the leadership of the county administrator. But emphasizing Black History Month because Black history is all about, it's history that relates to all of us. So I certainly appreciate that. I believe, Mr. County, I mean, Mr. Chair, I believe that's all that I have. Thank you for a great meeting. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And happy Valentine's to all of you. Special thanks to Commissioner Proctor for thanking about all of us for Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, that wasn't Commissioner Proctor, that was Rochelle. Rochelle, thank you. She was surprised they never bought us nothing for Valentine's. That was Rochelle. Rochelle, thank you.
As I was taking my bow here.
Nothing, bunt cake, good stuff, man.
On a serious note, thank you to Commissioner Proctor, as always, for that. Appreciate that. I was presently surprised when I got my bunt cake today. Happy birthday to our county administrator, but also a happy birthday to Commissioner Bill Proctor. He getting a little older, too, ain't he?
Vince is trying to catch me in the way he's trying to grab me.
Yeah, I think y'all are a day apart, I believe, right? So, yeah, same day, that's right. Happy birthday to you both. Happy birthday to you both. Mr. Chair, I got two proclamations. The first one is from our homeboy from Gastonia, Gastonia County, North Carolina. Leonard Hamilton is retiring, and he is more deserving or is deserving of a proclamation from us than anybody else. So I'd like to ask for a proclamation from Leonard Hamilton. That's my homeboy.
All right, I got a proclamation and a second from Commissioner Minor for Leonard Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
And if I may make a quick plug to our athletic director over at FSU, Coach Gates out in Missouri would be an awesome, awesome guy to bring back to us to lead our basketball program. He's doing some great things in Missouri. He left under Coach Hamilton to go out there to be the head coach, and he had another stop before that. Anyway, I'm putting my plug in, he'd be the guy.
Is that a motion second?
I'm not sure it would matter, but...
Full weight of the county commission.
Yeah, I'm sure it would matter. Second, proclamations for multiple sclerosis aware, multiple sclerosis awareness.
Second. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you led a great meeting tonight. I want to echo Commissioner Minor's words and the staff in that we do appreciate the hard work that you do. And as I said earlier, when we had, it was Ms. Streeter, right, presenting to us, and she talked a lot about that loyalty piece that is happening in the executive branch of government, we take pride and we appreciate the fact that you, that you put your expertise in the things that you know to be correct over what may be being loyal to us as board members. It means a lot. It helps keep the balance in place. It helps us keep, it helps keep us in line when we need to be in line. But to this board, I do believe that we are the best county commission in the state of Florida, if not nationwide. And there is a way that we work with our staff that I appreciate, too. I think as much as we appreciate our staff, I think our staff appreciates us. There are examples across the state, across the nation, of boards that aren't as staff-friendly as we are, or as appreciative as we are to our staff. And so no matter how it may look publicly, which I don't think anybody thinks anything less than, our staff loves us, and we love our staff, I think it's good, Commissioner Minor, to put on record that we have a good relationship between Leon County Commission and their staff here in Leon County. So I wanted to make that, make that statement and make that known. Same thing to your staff, Madam County Attorney, and the job that you do for us up here, too. You would not tell us what we want to hear. You will tell us what's right, and that is what you need out of a attorney. So again, we appreciate you as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Oh, good luck to my, to my baby girls, well, actually, not babies anymore, they're teenagers. One is participating in a dance competition on Saturday. The other one is at her first flag football game for her senior year, number 20, Nyla Maddox. You'll recognize the number. Good luck to them as they participate this weekend in their athletic ventures. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I have no business to discuss.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you for a great meeting, and I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And Commissioners, I have, I have nothing else, other than I just want to congratulate Vince also on his induction into the distinguished alumni of the College of Social Sciences that we've seen a couple of times up there. Pretty, pretty awesome recognition. We're probably going to need a motion for another bookshelf in the county minister's office for all the show, for all the awards and things like that. But I did want to say thank you all for making the most of a short agenda tonight. I think we squeezed every ounce out of that one. And thank you, and hope you guys have a great rest of February, and, well, I guess I'll see, we'll see everybody on the 25th. So thank you for a good meeting. Good night. We're adjourned.